Is that it?
One sec, we just have, we have a couple of people from, we have the Mayor of Madowa online also. We're just checking to see if you have a question.
I think he just said, great job. Thanks for the good presentation for the Mayor of Madowa.
If you, yeah.
Paul, do you have any questions, comments? No, I guess they can't hear. I just want to say thank you Suzanne. I know that you spent a lot of time in this part of the northeastern Ontario. We met a few times during the, during the study and it was wonderful to see you and your team and knowing that a lot of the results are from our area. So there were many people interviewed from this particular area. So thanks for coming to make a presentation to council. I know that this study was over two years in the making and next steps, can you tell us about next steps?
Well, next steps for us is to kind of dig a little deeper into the data. This is really an overview and so we're going to be focusing on kind of specific aspects and writing papers from that. And then I'm going to continue probably doing research on work in northern Ontario going forward. Probably not this population, looking at different types of ways that work is shifting northern Ontario, but I haven't written the grant yet, so I don't want to talk about it. So basically right now I'm, we're just going to be analyzing the data. There's so much data from this type of research. So this is kind of like the surface cut. And now it's going to be kind of like digging in to different themes and then publishing papers on those themes.
And you may hear more through Phenom because I've put Phenom and Suzanne, you know, in touch with each other and they've been promoting it. And so that it may be the subject of a future Phenom meeting. So stay tuned for more of your news there. So thanks again for making time.
Thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate it. Take care. Bye bye.
He's still there, his iPad is not working here.
On his side, I really think so.
Robert, are you still with us?
I am.
Great, great. Thank you. We'll move on to business arising from previous council meetings. The first one.
Oh, you had.
Oh yes, we're going to accept the delegation. I need to move her in a second to accept the delegation. Mr. Latimer, do you want to move that?
Yes, I move it.
It's Council Latimer, seconded by Council Mattson. Now therefore be it resolved that Suzanne Mills, Dr. Suzanne Mills, Western University was before council as a delegation to council with respect to Western University's migration study. All of you favor? Council Latimer?
In favor.
So that is carried. The next item is business arriving, arising from previous council meetings. This is the municipalities' Calvin's expected code of conduct. Repeal and replace by law number 2022 dash 27. I just, before we discuss it, this was, I think it was Councilor Morton who brought this forward, that we had to look at any bylaws or policies we had that were still copy protected. And the, the challenge was that you can't take a copy protected bylaw and modify it because it's, it's like listening to somebody's song and then writing your own song based on that song. You're still in copyright violation. So what it became necessary to do was to have staff download different expected codes of conduct from other municipalities and sort of merge those together rather than write our own. So what you have before you is what staff has downloaded as expected codes of conduct from other municipalities. So before we read the resolution, I'll go around the table as Council Latimer can't raise his hand. And I'll start with you, Councilman.
Do you comment? I think it's much nicer overall than the other policy. It's simpler, more direct. I think it's also an opportunity to opportunity to, I have some suggestions that I think will maintain the spirit of the intention of the policy, but also I, I think there should be a goal as well to try to not limit the services of the ratepayers or a ratepayer that may, that may find themselves having this policy applied to them. So what I mean by that, I'll give some of my suggestions that might make more sense, but keep in mind, my goal is to try to not limit services, but instead address any issues that might happen between staff and a ratepayer that is vexatious or any of these terms that are used. So I think there's some things we can do that might allow both to be possible at the same time. And so my first suggestion is a tiered approach to discipline. And it does speak of it in here, but I just think that it should maybe be a little bit more specific in that discipline would happen in a tiered approach, just like any, any discipline we would, we would conduct. So maybe, you know, obviously there'd be a verbal warning and we'd have written warning, you know, in a progressive nature before someone would be, let's say banned from the office. Or in the case that there's lots of nuance in this discussion because I do believe that if someone, even today, or even before, even if we didn't have this policy, if someone came in the office and, you know, was yelling profanities and threats and acting outrageous, I mean, I think we would ask them to leave and probably call the police. So it would be the appropriate action. So I'm really looking at this as kind of a non-criminal policy, non-criminal issues, because issues of a higher threshold are going to be dealt with the police anyways. So that's where I think we could have a, maybe a little bit of a progression in the way that we handle it, written. And my second thing is like a segmented approach, called segmented approach. This, this would kind of have some language around. So let's say someone is using vulgar language and acting very inappropriately at say a council meeting. Right? They're mad at council or something. And this policy would apply that that might not like that we may take action to prevent that type of behavior, but why ban them from accessing, say, the landfill or, or other services where they're not sending emails, right? Where they're not, that specific issue is not a problem. So that, that's really important to me is because it allows the communication to continue, but avoid the potential issue that is at hand. And so I have a tiered approach discipline. I have a segmented approach to make sure that residents can access services that they're paying for, but you can also avoid issues is the whole point of the policy, if I believe. And I guess the third is there should be, I believe, an appeal process to council. And I think the council's role in the policy should be more of an oversight role. Right now it says support the policy, support the application of the policy. I think council can play an important role in oversight to make sure that, you know, this is not used appropriately. So tiered approach, segmented approach and appeal process and council's role is oversight. So those are my suggestions for the policy.
So those are suggestions to change the policy as it's written?
Yes. And I, you know, I just want to put that out there for other councillors because I think there's lots of good stuff here. I think that, you know, it's important that we potentially have a policy like this. I just think that also there needs to be kind of a ratepayer kind of perspective in it as well as to, you know, trying to, we want safe and healthy work environment, but we don't want to unduly or unnecessarily restrict ratepayers from accessing services. So I think there's a balance to be struck. And then I don't want to be taken out of context because if someone is doing something criminal or making threats or something, I mean, obviously that should be done with, with police. So I kind of see this as issues not to that level, but still issues. So that's where I think we can have some a plan to kind of work with those people and not, you know, there, there could be a, some options.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for the consideration. Let's go around the table. Council Mattson?
Um, good ideas were mentioned there and I had something mirrored that. It is a balance between, because we work for the ratepayers, so we want their, our customers, so we want to support them and help them. But if someone's acting out and acting appropriately, has to be a mechanism to deal with that at the same time. It, this does dig into some examples and I wanted to just talk about this for a second. So, so examples of the conduct that is being referenced here. Excessive, excessive demands on staff time. So I don't think that, that there has to be some, I think a little bit more explanation around these because if someone is going to do a project where there's, there's a lot of communication required or a lot of someone's severing, say, and trying to build and they're trying to edge out themselves on the process and there's some hiccups, there will be potentially excessive demands from time to time on, on staff. That's a possibility. So a legitimate process shouldn't have, be fulfilling the definition of inappropriate conduct. Just because there's a complicated or lengthy process someone's doing.
So may I just interrupt? What you're saying, you'd like a stronger definition of these?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
In addition to that, previously addressed issues without new information. So again, on, on that front, if someone is, if there's an, an issue that is, say, closed on one party's end, it doesn't necessarily mean it's closed on the other party's end. So there's various angles people can, can take. I'm just putting myself in the shoes of a property of a ratepayer trying to negotiate with a municipality. And I, I wouldn't want someone to be, again, we are here to serve them. So if there's, you know, previously addressed issues without new information, I, I think we can, if someone wants to build something, I'm trying to find an example. And they're trying to look for different angles or different, different ways to accomplish a goal without necessarily having new information. I don't think that that's, should be considered poor conduct behavior. Threats of legal action requiring cessation of direct communication with staff and engagement of the municipal with their, same thing. If I'm talking to, to a municipal employee and litigation comes up, that's not a reason to terminate discussions. Litigation is a tool that's required in many cases to, to settle disagreements. But if, if someone is, is having a frustration and then, you know, and they mention, well, what, what else am I going to do? Am I going to do, take this avenue? Or am I going to take litigation as an avenue? That's saying what, what, I'm going to use this wrench or this hammer. It doesn't, if you're referencing potential litigation, it doesn't mean that that's poor conduct. That's saying this is an approach that I'm going to potentially take. So repetitive or obsessive requests for information. If the information is not coming and you are repeatedly requesting it, or if you're either not understanding it properly or it's not coming in a way where, where we're driving and communication is happening. Again, I, I don't think that can be exclusively poor behavior. And then attempts to reopen resolved issues. If, again, if an issue is resolved in one person's mind, but it's not in, in another person's mind, then reopening it to try to find a, a different approach to get satisfaction. So tightening up some of these definitions so that it's not, oh, this person is, is requesting this. I can see here I'm ticking a box. We're done talking to you. I definitely don't want any of that to happen. And we're writing policy for staff today and staff tomorrow. So we really want to get it right in terms of having, having good words in here and good definitions, I think. So that was just one point around the, the definition or the, the examples of conduct, even mentions loitering, which I don't see necessarily how that, I don't, maybe that's come up. People just hung around, but.
Was one case in some ways.
Well, we shouldn't necessarily read a policy about, you know, to get a specific situation addressed. Another couple of, just a couple of points on that, the appeal, it says there's a written appeal and writing within 10 days. I don't think the 10 days is necessary. I think if you've, if you get a letter in the mail, you should be able to appeal at any point. And then I also think another layer of oversight. It says, oh, appeals go to IC, CIO, legal. I think that we can use council as a sounding board and for that escalation as opposed to going to IC or legal. So reporting, I think when the policy is either appealed or the either appealed or we're putting a restriction in place, that it should go to council for a a review of that point. Those are all my thoughts.
Excellent points. I, you know, it's, it's funny, as you were speaking, I was trying to think on both sides of the, the issue and, and it's hard to do that, but the idea of the bringing up legal. I, I heard that many times at my, my previous place of employment. And what they would say to us is that even if you're trying to resolve customer complaints, you, you take every avenue you can to resolve those complaints, but at the point that someone says, I'm going to sue you, that becomes a threat and you should stop talking to the people and turn that over to legal counsel. Because you might now say things that would be inappropriate. So it was an advice to our employees. But the way you framed the discussion was not somebody threatening that I'm going to sue you. It was talking about the possibility of litigation. So there's a, there is a big difference between a threat and a discussion. And that's probably what you're saying is the definitions have to be a little bit tighter. I think, you know, staff has to be able to protect themselves from threats, but not be threatened by discussions. Is, is, is that something what you're saying, sort of?
That's a, that's a very fair statement. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Councilor Morton?
Robert, first, or do you want?
All right, Councilor Latimer, as you know, where I'm going. Council Latimer, are you there?
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, I think it's straightforward and to the point, which I like. I think the more complex you make it, you know, the more difficult it will be to, and to enforce. It's clear, there are clear boundaries, clear definitions, and there's an, there's an appeal process if you don't agree for the, for the person who may have restrictions placed upon them. And I tend to, you know, our, our staff will perform in a courteous and professional manner. I don't think we, you know, that's the expectation and that's, that's the, that's the way they, they will act. And so I, I'm happy with the way it's written. I think that, again, the more complex you make it, the more difficult it will be to understand and enforce. So I'm good with it as it's written.
All right. Thank you. And Councilor Morton?
I agree. The purpose of, of the policy is to put a policy out. And then it's just like the criminal code. There's a criminal code and then there's a set of case law. That's probably 10 times the biggest of a criminal code. So when you go through the, for example, our CIO feels harassed, harassed and threatened by some behavior at the front desk. Well, then it goes into how it's investigated and handled by whoever does the investigation. It's not just like, well, you harassed her, so you're guilty and that means you're going to get nine. And then in, in the policy, I think the maximum penalty is 90 days. I know somebody that thought that they would never banned, never banned for life. And and it's just like when councillors get banned by an ombudsman, it's 30 days, 60 days, 90 days or punitive monitored. Like there's, there's very, there's so many variables involved in it that you can't specific on each one of them, where that policy will be 5,000 pages long. Right? So go with the policy and then let the investigator or whoever, the adjudicator make a decision. And that way it's going to be fair because you've got the Labor Relations Act. You've got Code of Conduct, you've got the Criminal Code, you've got all kinds of laws and they all deal with variables, but the policy is a policy. We could spend all night talking about variables.
I'm sure we could. I was, I told Charlie, don't expect me home really early. Counselor, wait, before we go to you, I'd like to comment. I'm not really that troubled with the policy itself, but I do have some serious problems with sections six and seven and eight. And as soon as I read them, I thought, whoa, 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 we can't do that. And I thought that maybe these came in from other municipalities and that's why they wound up in this way. But my, my difficulty is the CIO determination regarding reasonable, frivolous or vexatious conduct consults with the municipal solicitor and/or the integrity commissioner. The integrity commissioner should have nothing to do with any of this. An integrity commissioner is only to judge the, the conduct of council members. This is to judge the conduct of the public. And if you look at the municipal code, you cannot use an integrity commissioner to judge whether the public is doing something wrong because that's not their role. It then goes on to say, monitoring review, all cases reviewed individually by the CIO consider personal circumstances and the nature of requests and prior resolution efforts unless deemed otherwise by legal counsel, the integrity commissioner or the Ontario Ombudsman. Again, you can't involve the, the integrity commissioner. We have a code of conduct and it says that the councillors have to behave in a certain way. And if they don't, people can complain to the integrity commissioner about the code of the conduct of councillors and mayor. But the, the integrity commissioner does not have any authority over the public. So we, he should not be involved in any of this whatsoever. The ombudsman cannot make any comment about the public whatsoever. It's way out of their role. The ombudsman can give us advice as to how we should structure a policy that's fair for staff, but they cannot be involved in any situations that deal with the public. So we just have to work on, as, as far as I'm concerned, that's something that definitely needs to be addressed and changed. All of the references to integrity commissioner have to disappear from this. Because the integrity commissioner, again, is to, to, to look at complaints against councils, not complaints against staff, not complaints against the public.
So on that note though, if you looked at examples of a code of conduct covered, the reasons they're in there is that this does involve council. This is, it's not only about staff. So at staff or council making unfounded, so that person would then go to the integrity commissioner and the integrity commissioner would then.
Yeah, but this policy is to deal with complaints by the public. This is the public's code of expected behavior, not council's or staff's code of behavior. If the public doesn't like what the CIO is doing, they go to the ombudsman. If the public doesn't like what I'm doing, they go to the integrity commissioner. This policy deals with the staff and council not liking the way the public is treating staff or council. This is to protect staff from people who become vexatious.
Not just to protect staff, also council.
Well, yes, okay. So it's to protect staff and council from vexatious, dangerous situations created by the public. So the integrity commissioner has nothing to do with this whatsoever. At no point in time should we involve the integrity commissioner. So whoever, you know, this was probably written by somebody else in another municipality and they just didn't realize that.
No, I, I understand why it's there though, because if public is, read the examples of codes of conduct covered. Unreasonable behavior may include excessive demand on staff time, persistent raising previously addressed issues without new information, hostile or offensive language directed at staff or council, making unfounded complaints against staff or legal, or against the situation directed with staff or council, which means they would go to the integrity commissioner. And well, I know that's why this one was written because we had a conversation, but it's your code of conduct. So, you know, no matter what, that doesn't prevent somebody who went to the integrity commissioner about a complaint toward you. Well, of course we can. And this is what this is saying.
No, we have a code of conduct that, that deals with council.
It deals with your conduct.
Yes. So if Anne doesn't like my conduct, she uses the code of conduct. This policy is to deal with staff that is harassing Anne. So it has nothing to. Sorry, sorry, the public, or if, if Anne has a problem with what council is doing, she uses the code of conduct to the integrity commissioner.
I understand how.
If, if she, if she has a problem with what the public is doing, she uses this policy. So it has nothing to do with the integrity commissioner. If you call the integrity commissioner and say a, a, a member of the public who's in here and he was threatening Anne, then this is the policy that we have to go to. And if you went to the integrity commissioner and said, Anne is being threatened by a member of the public, the integrity commissioner is going to tell you, that's not my purview. I can't deal with that. So it shouldn't be in this policy. Yeah, that's, I.
I understand why it's there, but.
And, and the ombudsman, again, is the reverse. That could be part of the appeals process. If somebody is from staff has said, I want this person banned from the office, then that member of the public can go to the ombudsman to put a complaint in about the staff member. If somebody from council says, I want this person banned from the office, then someone can go to the ombudsman and say, I want to complain against that councillor. So again, it's just where these complaints come is we have to protect the staff and the staff has to feel safe.
This is also about council though.
Well, and the, the staff and council have to feel safe. And if somebody comes in and is aggressive and nasty in the tone, staff has a right and council has a right to say, please cease and desist or leave the premises. They have the right to defend themselves. If that person doesn't want to do, doesn't want to stop what they're doing to harass staff, then the next step would be whatever this policy says to do. This policy says if those people won't stop harassing staff, this policy says they should be barred from the, the, the premises for three months. If that person then says, I'm not going to leave, I'm going to come here. That's where Dean is saying, then the police should be involved. And that's where our solicitor, municipal solicitor should be involved. And they might get a no trespass order or they might get a I don't know, cease and desist order from our solicitor. But at no point is the, the integrity commissioner involved here. It's, it's not his purview because what we're talking about is staff and council being harassed. Either their safety is in danger or just their mental wellbeing is in danger. And, and that's what we're trying to protect here. So I, I just think we have to review the way we've got this written. And I, I'm sorry if, I, I don't mean to seem, sound really strong on this point, but what the whole goal of this bylaw is to protect our staff from being harassed and council to, to protect our, our staff.
By the public, that's why it doesn't go to the integrity.
And just, I want to make a special note here that let's. And just, I wanna make a special note here that let's say, no matter what council agrees to. If any staff feels threatened, they're not gonna go to this page if it's not strong enough. They will call the police.
And that's fine.
They should, though, if it's a police matter, like.
And not, and I disagree, like if it's unless it's criminal, give them three chances. You walk into any storefront, you walk into a doctor's office, people kick the door open loud and clear, they're told, gone, don't come back. You don't say, come back and abuse me one more time, because you have one more chance after the next time. There's no step process in how people treat people really poorly and scream and yell. And I'm sorry, we see that, you're not in the office every day, it happens quite frequently.
Oh, I hey, listen, I agree with the whole policy. I I really do. I think it's a good idea and and I think it's something that's necessary. And and I agree with what councillor Latimer and Morton said. I think it is a good policy and I don't think it can be too complicated. I just think that we have to remove the integrity commissioner. And actually, I I did do research on this. And and I, the research that I did came back with recommendations. Yes, it is. And it says, uh, it says, um. With the integrity commissioner, when to involve, only if the issue involves a councillor behaving improperly. Not appropriate for abusive residents or problematic public complaints.
I think we've returned over.
Okay, ombudsman, role investigates administrative fairness in complaints about municipal processes. Uh that they can review complaint processes or systematic issues. So that's the role of the ombudsman. Uh the town solicitor provides legal advice to the municipality when to involve when the resident behavior becomes harassing. Threatening or legally risky. When drafting or enforcing a vexatious and frivolous complaints policy, many Ontario municipalities have one. Uh when issuing trespass warnings under trespass and the Property Act when needed. And when the resident's behavior could be liable or disrupt municipal operations. And that's, you know, that's the point. The solicitors is is who you have to do. So what they're saying, best best practice in Ontario is municipalities typically use a combination of a vexatious or frivolous complaint policy. Which is this, the the code of conduct, which allows staff to limit interactions, restrict communication methods. Or decline repetitive requests, which is exactly what you're saying in the policy. And then two, the staff safety or harassment policies. Uh similar to the Occupational Health and Safety Act. And number three, trespass to property act notices if the behavior accelerates and is dangerous. These policies are usually created and reviewed by the town solicitor. So.
And the town solicitor is in here because it is policy today, it's just not written. Now the public knows that our solicitor has said, as soon as someone threatens to sue you. You no longer, as you said, you no longer talk to them, because you're now putting the municipality at risk.
Right.
By continuing to discuss something. Somebody says they're going to shoot you, you don't say, bring your gun.
Well, unless you're.
But so it's in there so that the public knows that that is already a policy.
And and I agree with that policy. But anyway, listen, that was just my two cents worth.
Actually, I do, I just have a couple of quick discussion about it. Um I just don't see anywhere where there's any limits to to. No, that's two punishments, like you said.
It's there features under uh at least three, six.
It says reviewed.
Yeah, reviewed.
Reviewed meaning. There's no limit, though.
Does there have to be?
What if the behavior is so vexatious that you did want.
I think you would call the police, is what I'm trying to say, right? Like this is where I'm at, like.
It's gonna be a trespass notice and it's only good for Thursday.
Even the criminal code is only good for thirty days, so this is where I, you know.
We're not going to issue a no trespass notice without legal involvement.
But that's the step process, too. You get the trespass notice. And then if you continue, you get, you can get criminal harassment, which is ten years.
Yeah, which would happen, it just. You know, points strongly that there's a possibility that someone could. That I actually feel like it's highly likely that someone could get caught up in this policy, um unintentionally. Um and what I mean by that is, you know, um I think it's very obvious for us and and I would never disagree, it's one of these tough arguments. If someone kicks a door or threatens or something, it's very obvious. I just don't think any of us question at this table what should be done. It's just a gray area of, you know, uh too many emails, whoa.
Hmm.
I I've been accused of these things in the past, I can tell you right now, you know, and it's like. There is no, it's not vexatious, it's, you know, so it's um, go ahead, Bill.
Well, the problem is under the Labor Act, though, if Anne feels threatened, you can't say, well, that's not threatening. If she feels threatened, Labor Board's gotta look at it.
I agree.
So you don't, that handcuffs the this policy.
No matter what.
No matter what you say, if she says she's threatened or she feels she's harassed, we get harassment complaints all the time.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's because they don't agree with what you're doing. Well, that's not harassment.
You know, and and I will tell you one thing, councillor Grant is. Uh although I didn't like the way it was worded here, the um the ombudsman's office. Is the check and balance. If we wrongfully. Uh do something to somebody that limits their access to municipal services.
Yeah.
The the ombudsman complaint comes back to whoever on staff or council. I issued that complaint.
I understand, but I also understand how it all works and ombudsman processes. I got free speech. It's a joke. And so the only actual way to check and balance government is lawsuit. It's it?
Yeah.
Because the ombudsman's a joke. So, I mean, it's true, but I understand that's the right people way to say it. I just, let me just put this out there as not to, I really am trying to uh find some common ground here. And I do wanna work forward and maybe my initial comments were taken the wrong way. I just think. You know, I think we can have a policy that accomplishes the goals that I think we would all agree makes sense. However, that should be the goal. And what I'm interested in is just trying to. Make it a little bit more friendly, is not to limit, the goal shouldn't be to limit services, shouldn't be to punish someone, it should be to protect.
Hmm.
Right? I think that we can make a few changes that can protect without punish, should be to protect.
Can I?
Go ahead.
So can I ask who you're protecting then?
Staff and council.
What last?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think there was nothing wrong with the last policy. I'll leave it at that.
I just agree, that's all.
The problem with the last policy is that it was.
Copyright, yeah.
So I did have one problem in in that they had a lot of uh vague statements in the original policy. But and you and I have talked about that before. But um this has taken out that vague, which which I appreciate. Um of all the things I've heard uh from everybody here, um I think. The policy itself is good, but I think there just needs to be a tiny bit of tightening. And I think, Bill, you're right. You can't put every example in, you know, if if somebody comes in and says this, it warrants this. Yeah, there there is, there has to be some interpretation. Um maybe uh. Like for me, it's just take out the integrity commissioner and the ombudsman out of the whole thing. But maybe I just made some notes, the thirty, sixty, ninety might be something to to add. That there's, you know, um different uh. Let's face it, if somebody comes into the office and is unfriendly. That's different than somebody who comes into the office and is threatened. That there's a big difference between those two actions. And the threatening uh should be something that we look at with the police, with legal counsel, whatever. And you have to remember, Dean, that sometimes you can say, call the police. But in some cases, if they don't think it's a viable threat, they're not gonna do anything.
Sure.
So we have to have, go ahead.
Oh, I thought you had.
Okay, the problem I see with putting in a thirty, sixty, ninety.
Okay.
Is you're limiting. So the guy that comes in and swears and shouts at Trish at the front desk. Or threatens or whatever, that not threatens to the point of being charged and threatening, but you know, is very abusive. Then you can't give ninety, because if you put in a thirty, sixty, ninety, he can only get thirty for the first offense.
I see.
So you have to leave it open.
Leave it open.
So that you can say, well, he went in and told her to F off. Okay, now he gets thirty.
Right.
But if he goes in and goes on a one retire rate, you get ninety.
Right, it's too complicated, I agree.
You're handcuffed and whoever is looking into it, that's all.
That's right.
Or and or you tell them the guy, it's worth thirty, thirty days to commit, because it's gonna be stolen for the next thirty days. So I'm gonna go in there and give him a piece. They could disrupt this meeting, but there's a specific section in the criminal code that you can't disrupt. Council meetings.
Right.
So I mean, it's all kinds of legislation. This, as Dean says, it's just a piece of paper, it's a joke. It's a pub, it's a municipal policy.
Right.
And as I said before, I mean, we have every staff member here, and sometimes I think has been threatened. Has had to deal with um unruly citizens. And in the two and a half years that I've been here, we've taken action on that two times. This is not about staff saying, oh, you're sending me two emails, so now I'm not gonna talk to you anymore. This is about and staff of the past that currently receive the same email without new information. Because someone didn't hear what they wanted to hear, didn't get what they wanted to get. They continuously send emails that just go, they tape our problem. And it does take time away from the real business of doing the work.
That makes sense.
And you don't see those things, um because you're not here every day and we don't share that information, because it's unnecessary that you should know that. Um but that this does happen regularly. I I know it's happened to past staff, but to past staff, I know it's happened to current staff. It happens. And this isn't things that we would bring typically to council saying, oh, nor they, you know, it's not. This doesn't come to council, but to councillor Morton's point, no matter what this paper says. If it's not strong enough for staff, staff have other ways to go protect themselves. They don't need council's permission to protect themselves through a policy.
Okay, so let me address that one issue right away. Councillor Grant, I'm gonna ask everybody in the poll. Uh councillor Grant, do you believe that staff need to be protected by a policy, yes or no? Yes, okay. Councillor Manson, do you agree that staff need to be protected by a policy, yes or no?
Yep.
Councillor Morton, councillor Latimer, do you believe that staff needs to be protected by a strong policy?
Of course.
Okay, so everybody's in agreement that staff should be protected by a strong policy. Uh I don't, I agree as well, one hundred and fifty percent. So the the only thing that we're talking about here is just basic semantics. And I I think it's just a matter of rewriting this policy a little bit, changing, taking out the integrity commissioner. You know, saying that the process is the C O takes, receives the complaint. And uh deals with the complaint and at a point that it is escalated to. Uh require a legal counsel that then it gets escalated into our legal counsel. And uh uh that it's just a policy and if it gets to a certain point that we also involve the police, does, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, you have to put in an alternative, because if you only have the policy has to go through the C O. What if the complaints against the C O?
Oh, good question.
Dealt in there somewhere, I can't recall. Yes.
Well, if there's a complaint against any staff member up to the C O, it would go to the C O. Like if somebody complained about the road being blocked, that's totally different.
Yeah, that's a complaint policy.
That's a complaint.
If the the complaint you're talking about, if what if they were complaining that uh.
Yeah, but this isn't about the this. This is about the protecting the staff from outside complaints. So it's not about a complaint to Donna, about Donna. It's not about a complaint about Anne or Trish. It's about them being harassed or put in danger.
I just was looking at it as a bottleneck.
Yeah, it's not a bottleneck, because.
That's right.
No, it doesn't have to have an overhead version.
Yeah, I think.
Go ahead, Anne.
Sadly enough, we're often taught in this industry that we have to have very round shoulders. Very round shoulders, very round shoulders. Uh no one calls to say, thanks, great job, awesome. Uh they feel that we're here on their dime appropriately though. However, we are in the business of customer service. And generally, if they come in the door and they're skyrocketing, we put our best effort. To bring them back down to the level where we need them to be to have an appropriate conversation. But when we can't do that anymore, I think that is when.
The policy comes in.
We need something, because event, either they come down with us. Or it just keeps escalating to a point like the term postal, nobody knew they were coming to work to do that that day.
Right.
So. And unfortunately, we do not have the protection of the Employment Standards Act. We do not have the protection. Of most acts when we work for the municipal sector. Uh so we often have to be dependent on council to per- permit policy to be in place for that protection. Because we don't have anything else.
I agree. Every and everybody you heard, everybody agrees that that should take place.
I can understand councillor Grant's uh discussion, because we are. Sometimes having to cut off that conversation. And where is the limit on that cutoff? And as they still have to pay taxes and they still require a service from us. However, if every alter, every time they come in, it's an altercation, then what are those steps? And the policy is there to guide, not just staff, but the C O as well, and to how we address that situation.
So we all agree that there should be a policy in place. Everybody agrees that that should happen. And I don't care where you go. I I took my wife to an optometrist a couple of days ago, a big sign up on the door. Uh we will not tolerate abusive language or behavior. Every time I go to the hospital, I see in the X ray lab, in the blood lab. The we will not tolerate abusive or excessive behavior. It is becoming a pandemic. And it's something that we have to deal with, and you're right, that's, let's, let's get it done. Um.
Just that.
Yeah.
It doesn't say on the third instance.
No, no, it says originally it will be, and and that's why we need some kind of policy. Oh, I don't think that it has to be the third instance.
No, I mean, it's not a, it's not a step process, it's we will not tolerate.
Can I make a suggestion, and that is that that we ask, ask you, uh head of C O, just to do. Uh a rewrite, um keep it strong, but just. The only thing. If I had to make one suggestion, the only thing I would do is uh. Keep everything the way it was, but put in a a councillor oversight. In other words, when there was an an instance where somebody has been barred for life. That is brought to um a council meeting that, you know.
An appeal process.
And as you mean, give me an robust appeal process, me something.
There's an appeal, isn't there?
Yeah, appeals are.
Yeah, but make it robust. It's it it it. Screwed. If you don't go ten days, like why, why ten days, like, you know, why, why restrict, like, let's have an appeal process.
So I think the appeal should go to it to us as opposed to this person who initiated the the sanction in the first place. Because they they may be of a very similar mind, so you you should have for an appeal an objective other party.
Well, you do, it does say legal counsel here.
Because those those removal of services are going to be legal councils.
Right.
We're not going to ever say no trespass as staff, it goes to legal.
The uh maybe more reasonably thirty days.
All right.
But for them to appeal whatever decisions, maybe you gotta remember something's gonna happen, say in February. And it's gonna get dealt with maybe later in February or March. And they're gonna, then they've got until April to appeal.
Yeah, so it could be thirty.
Thirty days, yeah.
About ten days might be, they they wanna consult with a lawyer and then they're, because of a weekend or because of, let's say, it happens over Easter or something. Then you got a long day, ten days might be handcuffing them to give a reasonable expectation of responding to the.
So I.
Decision.
I have another weird question. We have everything regarding the C O, what if you're on holidays?
Um.
Well, that's a good point.
That happens often, sure.
No, but I'm just saying, what 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 happens in your absence?
And you're right, there's no, there's no second thing, because it says employees, documents, supervisors. And, you're right, there's no, there's no second thing, because it says employees, documents, supervisors, review, bring matters forward. So it is about every staff level is discussing this.
Well.
We have every staff level, whether it's a supervisor and the C E O, we're all involved.
So if you weren't available, then it could be the supervisor?
It's still, yeah, supervisors and employees are still.
So maybe just sp- spell that out, that if, if you're not available, this, the, the supervisor the could also, sorry, Anne, I don't wanna give you extra response.
You'll be the deputy.
That's our job.
It could be the deputy clerk as well.
Oh, yes.
Can I add something to this conversation, please? First of all, if Donna, if Donna is on vacation, she delegates somebody to be to um look, look after some of her responsibilities, not necessarily a supervisor. And uh if someone's going to be banned from um, you know, for ten, twenty life, that's going to come to council. It has in the past, so you know, I think if we're getting to that extreme, it would probably be wise to bring it to council. I don't think the C E O is going to be handing out life sentences. Maybe, but I doubt it.
You said it was, you've uh seen this policy implemented twice. I can only call one occasion where it did come through council.
Right, because it didn't need to go to council, it was a legal threat, and the lawyer has said to us before, they're all legal threats, immediately go to lawyer.
Okay, can that still be reported to council? I, I, I think that if we're executing, if we're, we're bringing this uh policy and we're disciplining, that it should be reported to council, so that we're aware of the, of the parties in the situation.
Okay, so find a, find a place to put that, that council is informed of.
Right.
I agree, it should be informed of, not council. The recommendation is so many suspension, but it's, it's really, council is informed. And as far as where do you start with abusive behavior, and where do you stop? If you have a dog that bites, they only get one. So I don't think there's any, there's no uh, there's no freebies in this.
We all agree here that what we're trying to do is protect staff, and, and we agree that that's.
One, that abusive behavior.
And limited abusive behavior. And uh, listen, council is sitting here. We've been pretty lucky, but I mean, I've seen council in, in Bonfield. Uh, and I suppose, they, they actually had a lot of very abusive uh uh behavior towards council in, 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 in a meeting that they had. So I mean, it is also for council, so you're gonna go to the C E O and tell them, this is what's happening. It hasn't happened yet, but it, it very well could. Am I correct, Don?
So we're deferring this to, uh, we're deferring this to.
Yes.
Or not reveal it.
Nor.
No. All right, moving on. Uh, so the, uh, the motion is on the floor to defer to the next meeting for a rewrite?
Uh, to a future meeting, I'm not gonna have that ready for the next meeting.
All right, to a future meeting. We're, just, sorry, what, certain adjustments, foreign adjustment. All right, uh, the municipal, uh, Calvin expect to conduct repeal and replace. Uh, I, I need a motion, a mover and a seconder for a deferral. Moved by uh, Council Morton, seconded by Councilor Manson, that this item be uh deferred to a future meeting for the re- repeal and replace. And we just leave things as they are for now. All those in favor? I'm as well.
Favor.
Thank you. So let's carry it. All right. From one type of defending people to another kind of defending people, the next item on the agenda is a report that I'm bringing forth on uh uh strengthening uh self-defense laws in Canada. And uh, uh, before I uh call it the resolution.
This is a castle.
Yes. Um, oh, do round table, uh, Council Grant, any comments?
Oh, I think it's fantastic, I love the idea. Um, and for all the recent state of the resolution, and uh, so I have comments.
Council Manson?
I agree, it's uh absent in our, where we're, we're living in, it, it doesn't make any sense to me. It's not, this is a, it's a lot of sense, so I appreciate you bringing it forward.
All right, thank you. Councilor Ladner?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm in favor, I agree.
I agree. When uh, um, if there's no other things, I'll uh.
Have to get to read the motion.
All right, uh, whereas. Pardon me?
It is on, been posted, so you shouldn't have to re-involve it.
Well, it's a motion. Whereas home invasions have increased in several regions of Ontario pre-eating, growing fear and frustration among residents, and whereas Ontario homeowners increasingly believe that current self-defense laws do not provide sufficient or clear protection for individuals who locally defend themselves and their families during violent intrusions. And whereas rural residents often experience police response times that can exceed thirty minutes or more, leaving citizens without immediate protection when confronted with life-threatening emergencies. And whereas the absence of home invasion as a di- a distinct offense in the national uniform crime reporting system prevents governments from understanding the true scale of this crime and responding appropriately. And whereas the province of Ontario has repeatedly called for the strengthening homeowner protections, including considerations of Castle Law-style provisions, and for the federal government to act, and whereas residents expect all levels of government to take decisions or decisive action to address gaps that now leave families vulnerable in their own homes. Now therefore be resolved, municipality of Calvin strongly supports the province of Ontario's call for strengthened homeowner self-defense protections, including a clear and robust Castle Law-type provisions to ensure that law-abiding residents can protect themselves without fear of unjust prosecutions. Council calls on the government of Canada to immediately prioritize reforms to the criminal code that strengthen and clarify the rights of homeowners who act in legitimate self-defense during violent home invasions. Council demands that the federal government amend the uniform crime reporting system to classify home invasions as a distinct criminal offense, allowing for accurate tracking and targeting enforcement and informed public policy. Excuse me, council urges the province of Ontario to take stronger action to monitor, publish, and im- uh improve police response times in rural and northern communities, and to ensure that residents are not left unprotected due to resourcing shortages. Council encourages all Ontario municipalities to adopt similar resolutions to demonstrate a unified municipal voice, calling for urgent reforms that protect citizens in their homes. Be it further resolved, the copies of this resolution be forwarded to the Prime Minister of Canada, Minister of Justice, the Attorney General of Canada, the Premier of Ontario, the Attorney General of Ontario, the Solicitor General of Ontario, M P P Vic Fidelian, all other municipalities. Does need a mover and a seconder? Council Manson?
You moved it.
You moved it.
Oh, I moved it, sorry. So you're gonna second it, Councilor Manson? Um, so, uh, any questions or comments before I call it to a vote? None? All in favor? Council Ladner?
In favor.
In favor? Carry. Thank you. Um, consent uh, agenda items for information purposes. Uh, from robust consent agenda, anything that anybody wishes to address or bring forward? Round the room, Councilor Ladner?
Yeah, I, I like the um, seven point one zero motion to allow and uh, pro- or nonprofits to have curbside recycling.
All right, that's actually uh, big in our agenda today, so makes a lot of sense. So you'd like that to be brought forward to the next meeting?
Yes.
And anything else?
Not for me.
All right, so now therefore be resolved, the council for the corporation municipality of Calvin hereby, oh, I'm sorry, I need a mover and a seconder. Uh, Council Grant and Councilor Morton. Now therefore be resolved, the council for the corporation municipality of Calvin hereby receive the consent agenda items as presented, and move the following for discussion to the next meeting. The uh notice of motion curbside recycling nonprofits. All those in favor? I am as well. Uh, Council Ladner? You second?
Into.
Thank you very much. Uh, administrative matters, Talik Engineering Planner of Record Pre-Application Consultation Report. Um, this is just a report before everyone, uh, it addresses um. Yes, just sure.
Just to say that Council Grant did leave the room.
Oh. Oh, yes, Council Grant left the room because this was his declaration. Um. This is a, 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 a pretty in-depth report, and I'll tell you, if you have some questions about planning, there's a lot of uh information in this report worth reading. Um, there's not much discussion, we're just accepting the report, right? All right, so uh, I need a mover and a seconder to accept this report. Councilor Manson, Councilor Morton. Um, uh, moved by Councilor Manson, seconded by Councilor Morton, that the council for the corporation municipality of Calvin received Talik Engineering's Planner of Record Pre-Application Consultation Report. Uh, twenty-three, twenty-ninety-nine, Wally Highway seventeen, noting a copy was shared with the East Nipissing Planning Board and the Chief uh Building Code Official. All in favor? And that is carried. Councilor Ladner, you're in favor?
I am.
All right, Council Grant, you may return to the table. Uh, next is a request for uh, uh, Jody and Dan Maxwell, designation of the Maxwell Retirement Events as an event uh minute of municipal significance. I, I'm a little confused, I didn't quite understand this particular motion, and I, and I would ask for some of the clarification.
So very strange occurrence in the Gaming Commission of Ontario where liquor is served. If it is going to be served at no cost even, in a private setting, in order for them to do that, they need to obtain a permit from the municipality that calls their event an event of municipal significance. In order for them, it is really silly, but if, yeah, it's, it should counsel, and I call because, you know, Mrs. Maxwell was equally as confused, and, you know, Paulman, and they insisted this did occur, but it isn't an event of municipal significance, someone is retiring and they're hosting a party and serving alcohol. Uh, but because of the way the uh, the Gaming and Life Nipping Commission of Ontario is, this is in fact what council needs to do in order for them to obtain a permit to serve alcohol at their publicly advertised event. And that is why it's not a private event, where just individual people are being invited to come, it's being promoted as a public event. So because it's a public event taking place in a municipality that is incorporated, the council has to deem this an event of municipal significance in order for them to obtain a liquor license.
And then, as you said in here, we have no liability for this designation, it's just a designation, is that correct?
It is, and it's because they're publicly advertising it. If they hadn't advertised it, they wouldn't need ten.
This may be the first and last time we ever do this, I don't know. It's quite a niche uh thing.
I don't, there's a few comments I'd like to make, but I can't make them on public. Well, no, because there's some legal ramifications, I think. Not for them, I mean, not for us, for them.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
That's, yeah, no, but that's not, what we're being asked to do is just declare this an event of uh significance, is that the right, yeah?
Municipal significance, yeah.
And, and Maxwell Pottery has been in here for.
Thirty plus years.
Thirty plus years, and uh, they've been integral in, in the municipality, so.
Significant drawing card to the community.
So I want to stop you there for one moment. If this were to be taking place, I I just uh at resident A B C, and somebody on council didn't like resident A B C. It doesn't need to be the way we're thinking about it is, you know, because of who they are. It's because they've advertised this publicly, regardless of who they are in your community. It could be an individual, it could be farm is holding uh an open house, and they've invited the public and said to the public, come in and have a glass of wine with us to help celebrate our anniversary, and if they publicly put it out there, then you need council to declare it a municipal significant event in order for them to allow the public to come in. So doesn't matter who it is, how long they've been in your community, who they are, none of that matters.
Well, it's interesting. Seem that that would add to the municipal significance, though.
Though, yeah, they're calling it an event of municipal significance for who knows why, the only rationale is that they've advertised it publicly. I didn't mention.
I could have that here. They get a no silver. But I mean, I could understand why they wanna have it there, but I mean, realistically, bring this into venue that they could have.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, listen, I, I, I'm just gonna uh get a mover and a seconder, read the resolution, if there's any questions. Uh, moved by Council Grant, seconded by Councilor Morton. Whereas council has received a request from Jody and Dan Maxwell to have their retirement event scheduled on December the fifth twenty-twenty-five designated as an event of municipal significance, and whereas municipality uh municipalities designation of the event as being of municipal significance. Through a resolution of council is required in order for the organizers to obtain a permit uh from the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario to serve alcohol at their publicly advertised event, and whereas municipality will bear no responsibility or liability for any matters arising from this or related to the service or consumption of alcohol that the Maxwell Retirement, uh, at the Maxwell Retirement Event. Now therefore be resolved that the council for the municipality of Calvin hereby designates the Maxwell Retirement Event to be held on December the fifth, twenty-five, and be further resolved that a certified copy of this motion as required by the A G C O be furnished to the court, uh, by the court to Jody and Dan Maxwell. Any last comments or questions? None? All right, all those in favor? Council Ladner? Thank you, carried. Okay. Support for the East Ferris Resolution, North Bay Madawar Conservation Authority. Um, their recommendation that the entire board be removed and, and replaced by a new board. Uh, before we read the resolution, uh, perhaps any comments?
Is that correct, indecent? I didn't understand the resolution. I just, I didn't read it, I didn't understand it. Okay, that's fine, now I understand, that makes my, my mind. Uh, uh, basically I'm in favor, so I don't know, I'm not, but.
Okay, so other than that, you have no?
I had no other comments, no.
Councilor War- uh, Man- Manson?
I was a little confused uh in reading it as well. I thought they were asking us to support them changing their member, like you're saying that they're, they were suggesting that every municipality change their member?
Right.
Just to shuffle the deck? Is that the?
So what they're doing is they're saying, we wanna change our, our, our member on the board, and we're suggesting that you do the same thing, that you support us in this decision. Is that, is that correct?
They're, they're on the whole, we're shut down.
They're asking every municipality who is a member of the Madawar, North Bay Madawar Conservation Authority to, as a general first, remove and replace their member, and hire a chief administrative officer to lead the day-to-day operations and the organization staff.
So it's a shuffle?
Yeah.
It's a full shuffle.
Replace Bill, because Bill's been there.
Yeah, we saw full shuffles with this, yes.
This council decides, go ahead.
Well, I, 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 I.
I'm not making light of it, uh, there are problems as I've previously reported, and I think Council Ladner even suggested that the place shut down and be taken over by another organization, and uh those considerations have all been discussed, and the staff are working, doing their jobs, the company is moving forward, doing their, what they're supposed to be doing, but the media is telling us. And the uh, conservation. And the Conservation Ontario. Assistance that we've been getting, so that's the, the negative press is crippling the. The ongoing work, if it wasn't for the negative press and then there's two. Not that I would limit the press, but they are, but they're all looking at the bad stuff.
Well, they want to make it exciting.
Well, nobody cares about the good stuff, so like. You know, somebody, if somebody come in here and complain about our C A O, it'll be on the front page of the newspaper, but if. The Rose Court was out, does a great job and we get fifteen complaints, compliments about that, nobody cares. So that's the uphill battle, and as far as replacing or finding a C A O. With the provincial. Announcement recently, there's, our direction basically is, we're not gonna need a C A O because there's only gonna be. There's gonna be twenty-nine out of, out of work anyway. So there's thirty-six of them going down to seven. So suggesting to do, and that's supposed to all happen within the next twelve months. Because it's supposed to be in place for the next election, so that when this council, whoever it may be in twenty-twenty-six. Will say, okay. Using an example of, we talked about. Say we did it like V seven, we only had one councillor from the four. And then you rotated Madawar, Madawan, Papalone, Calvin, so then you would know it going in. Do you have one councillor from these four, do you have four councillors from these four? Much like the police board that used to, was at one point, two councillors and an at-large person. And during the course of change, it became three councillors and an at-large person. So I mean, those things are all happening. As we speak and I would feel personally, it would be. An imposition. On a councillor coming, I've been in there for three years and I agree, I didn't know anything about it when I started. And have only become recently involved. To the point where I know a lot more about it, because basically you go once a month to get your. What's going, you're, you're setting policy like what we're doing. You set policy, you don't do the job. Problem is because we've had some such turnover, some people started doing the job. It's not our job, it's not, it's not the board's job, it's the.
Okay, let me, let me just stop you though, what we're discussing here is supporting their resolution or not. And you, you're against it, councillor Latimer, you have any comments?
I, I just like the way it's written, it's, you know, I have no issue with councillor Morton as our representative. But this is, then becomes personal. It can be taken as personal. Definitely, there's, there is a problem and I don't know, so I don't think this is gonna solve it. Maybe just bringing it to the attention of. And our government ministers. If they're not aware of it already, I'm not sure this is the answer, so I'm not in favor because I don't. Because it's, I think it's poorly worded. And. Again, I don't have any issue with our current. Board member representing our municipality.
Let me get a mover and a second, I'll read the resolution and I'd like to call a recorded vote on, on this particular issue. So mover and a second, please. Councillor Adams, would you like to move?
I'll move, yes.
Seconded by. Councillor Grant. At the speed of light. Whereas the council for the corporation municipality of East Parish requests support from all. North Bay Madawar Conservation Authority Member Municipalities to replace their representative on the North Bay Madawar. Conservation Authority Board by January the first, twenty-twenty-six. So that a new board can begin the process of getting the authority past its current state of disorder. And turmoil and hire a chief administrative officer to lead the day-to-day operations and the organization staff. Now therefore, be it resolved, the council for the corporation municipality supports the municipality of East Parish. And furthermore, that a copy of this resolution be sent to the board, the North Bay Madawar Conservation Authority. Municipalities, Nipissing, M P P, Vicodelli and the Ontario Ministry of Environment Conservation and Parks and its originator. Councillor Grant, how will you? Oh, well, you'll do it, thank you.
Alright, so councillor Grant, how do you vote? Are you in favor or opposed?
Opposed to the resolution.
Councillor Latimer, in favor or opposed?
I'm opposed.
Councillor Manson?
Opposed.
Councillor Morton?
Opposed.
And Mayor Gold?
Opposed.
Alright.
So the motion is defeated. Next item on the agenda is just a preliminary agenda. There's not a bunch of information here, so I'll move through this quickly. If I can get a mover and a second or, and then I'll read the resolution and open for discussion councillor Manson. And councillor Morton. Whereas council is approved. Of Mayor Gold, councillor Latimer and CEO Maitland to attend the Roma Conference. Who will be reporting back to council on their participation, now therefore be a result that for information purposes. Council receives the preliminary. Conference agenda as posted by Roma on November the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, any comments or? Suggestions? Councillor Latimer, none? So, I'll call this to a vote, all those in favor of receiving the report? And councillor Latimer?
In favor.
And that is carried. Deputy clerk report to council schedule of regular council meetings. Just before I read it, do you have any?
No, we went through and I think it speaks for itself when Trish pulled the dates together.
Thank you, Trish. Mover and a second, please, councillor Morton, councillor Manson. Whereas bylaw twenty-twenty-four indicates there will be. About one meeting of council in each of the months of July, August and December. The date and time, location chosen by the C A O and the recommendation is that those meetings be held. On July fourteenth, August eleventh and December the eighth. Now therefore be resolved, the council for the corporation municipality of Calvin accepts. The twenty-twenty-six schedule of regular meetings of council as presented by the deputy clerk and. That staff be directed to post that schedule on the website, all those in favor? Councillor Latimer in favor? Carried. CEO report to council. This is on our procedural bylaw and. I'll, I'll let her speak to it, but this is. Changing it so that we can have two changes, the first one being. Meeting of the, the whole, which is simply a special meeting where. No resolutions are passed. There's no, but it is still a formal meeting with notes kept. And the, the meeting of the whole allows sort of for a little bit more freer discussion, but. You, you don't pass any resolutions, but you bring topics forward to council for discussion after that. So that's one of the things here, and the other one is that we're changing the date that you must submit information. To staff before a council meeting, and I'll let you know that if you will.
To the latter point, it's because the dates that you are allowed. Council right now to provide us with information to move on the agenda. Doesn't jive with when the agenda is actually ready for you to then take away and be, and be ready, so for example. This is submitted to us by Thursday, by Thursday, we typically have the packages already copied for you to come pick up on Friday. So if at four P M Thursday or three thirty P M Thursday, you're submitting an agenda item. We've already got the packages done so that you can come in and get them and have the weekend, so it doesn't make sense to receive them that late. Is that close to the meeting, the meeting agenda being sent out to, it just isn't possible in fact. And the same goes for when someone wants to be on the agenda. It, just because they're asking to be on the agenda doesn't necessarily mean they will be placed on the next agenda or any agenda. Oftentimes, people think they have to come to council for something when it's in the middle of the nature. The way that it's worded today in a procedural bylaw, people might think that it means they. Will come to council. And that they have until Thursday, oh, the day, the week prior to the meeting and for the same reason. That doesn't jive with when we have meeting packages ever, that's never been the case, I mean, you always have received your packages on time and. By, and, and councillor Morton, if I can just pick on you for one minute, you know, for example, he only gets his minutes from the North Bay Madawar Conservation Authority. Typically, long after our agenda is already done and said and copied. So it doesn't make it in on time, not because he's accustomed to do, it's not frivolous and fixation, it's not doing this on us. It's what happens, but that's the way, so this just puts it out there for everyone to know that we can't receive that information, so. Close to an agenda being ready, because it wouldn't, wouldn't allow me to see. We have to re photocopy everything, re-issue the website, it, it's a lot more work right now when something comes in too late. And if it's an emergency, we can always bring that forward, if, if there's something. If it's not in an emergency situation, we're asking that we stick to the five days prior, whatever's written in there now. Committee of a whole, as an example, today's bylaw that we were discussing. That could take place at a committee of a whole meeting where. We're at the end, at the end of the day, it still is a meeting that requires minutes and an agenda. It is a public meeting and a recommendation to council at its next meeting is brought forward. So you're not, even though you're all committee of a whole is full council. That committee brings a recommendation to council, no further discussion, the discussion happened at the committee of a whole meeting. So at a committee of a whole meeting, we would have had. Two hours, let's say, to discuss and to finalize perhaps that code of conduct today. We would have hashed it out, discussed it, agreed to, if that was were possible during that limited time that we allow ourselves to meet as committee of a whole. To discuss that issue, we could have, here's the record, let's the recommended changes, all agreed to it. That meeting would have showed a resolution to council to adopt this revised code of conduct. And then you would have come to the council meeting with a resolution that says, here's the code of conduct. Committee of a whole is recommending it to council. And the expectation would be then that council would approve of it because you made that recommendation back at your committee of a whole meeting. So those things. Helps us to get a regular council meeting so that you're not here beyond the four-hour timeframe. And to actually really discuss the issues instead of just presenting them in a report format where discussion should occur. And that would be where the, the mayor and I typically identify the issues, so I would say to him, for example, that one. When we get, we do have a meeting that we've agreed to before this particular. Agenda item came up and that's who we're going to be discussing the levels of service on December nineteenth. That's an exact example of what a committee of a whole meeting would be like, gives us time to discuss in greater depth an issue.
That is listed as a committee of the whole meeting.
So that's, that's why, and most councils have committee of a whole for that purpose, so that you're not at a council meeting. Discussing, acknowledging something that really requires. Effort, time and focus on one particular subject matter, it's also where we could bring. The, we can make it as practice to bring the consent agenda items. If we're meeting monthly, let's say, so that committee of a whole agenda could include all of those. And then someone could have a discussion about those things that they wanted to discuss. And then bring it as a recommendation to council, yeah.
And, and, and so proposal tonight would make an excellent maybe of the whole meeting. The garbage stuff.
Yeah.
Because that is one complicated proposal. Anyway, but it's not, true.
Okay, so that's really what it is, it's really, let's introduce committee of a whole to this council where we haven't had that before. And the last agenda, when we talk about regular council meetings, so that is a regular council meeting, that's not special council meeting. So that's not a special council meeting to discuss budget, that's not a committee of a whole, that's not committee meetings, those are just regular council meetings. That list that we must according to municipal make public by January first.
Any questions, comments? Councillor Latimer, any questions, comments?
No, it's a great idea, I, I agree.
We're in a second, councillor Latimer, would you move this?
I will.
Right, seconded by councillor Manson? Whereas section two thirty-eight of the municipal act of twenty-twenty-one, as, sorry, twenty-zero-one is amended. Provides that every municipality shall pass a procedure bylaw. For governing, the calling, the place and the proceedings of meetings. And whereas past council for the corporation municipality of Calvin adopted. Bylaw twenty-twenty-four dash forty-nine being a bylaw to govern and regulate the meetings and proceedings of council and committees. Commonly called the procedural bylaw, and whereas staff have recommended minor adjustments to the bylaw. Twenty-twenty-four dash forty-nine and the introduction of a committee of the whole. And now therefore be resolved that council for the corporation municipality of Calvin agrees it is in. The best interest of the corporation to accept and adopt the staff's recommendations. That the deputy mayor and C E O are designated as signing officers. That are authorized to execute on behalf of the corporation and municipality of Calvin, why do you have the deputy mayor?
Oh, you know what, because the last, the last procedural bylaw was deputy mayor and Mrs Ford's that were copied, so.
So I can pay no jury, mayor? Deputy mayor, might not be me next time.
But last time it was you, that's copied words.
So leave it.
No, 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 I'm kidding.
That the, the mayor and C E O are designated as signing officers and are authorized to execute on behalf of the corporation. Of the municipality of Calvin, that the attached form. Part and parcel of this bylaw, that the bylaw. Twenty-twenty-four dash forty-nine and any other bylaws inconsistent with the attached bylaws hereby appealed, this bylaw should be enacted. And in effect upon signing thereof, all those in favor? Councillor. That is carried. And. Sign.
Okay.
The hardest one. Next item is institutional, commercial and industrial recycling post-transition. To twenty-twenty-six, January the first. Where do we start? Can, can I go to our public works director to get us a leg up on where to start on this issue?
The province of Ontario. Out of good faith and good intentions. Recreated the blue box regulation, so now as of twenty-twenty-six, you'll see. Quite a bit going out about the regulation, it'll be the same eventually why. So it doesn't matter where you live in Ontario, we're all going to be recycling the same items, we're in the past. Depending on where you lived and what municipality, they chose what was being recycled. Also, this will remove the costs and financial burden from municipalities. To have to pay for recycling. So the province of Ontario made producers of recycling, AKA Amazon PepsiCo. Water companies, et cetera, they made them responsible to pay for recycling because they're the producers of the material. So, province of Ontario gathers all the funds from those entities. Puts it in a giant pool and that's how recycling is now paid for throughout the province of Ontario. The loophole, however, in the language of the regulation is that it only will collect residential blue box material. It did not. Mention what it would do with commercial blue box material. As we work through this, and believe me, I've been in a working group for probably like five years on this topic. That's when my first time cleaning down actually was when. We had a conversation out here with. So in that regulation, they do not accept residential or commercial materials, industrial. Commercial, institutional, which includes our own government buildings. Provincial government buildings, provincial entities, they kind of forgot themselves as well. There, to further complicate matters. As you see, councillor Latimer did bring forward that he would like to. Uh, as you see, counselor Latimer did bring forward that he would like to support on for profit, so non-for-profit. It's not to be collected. Places of worship are not to be collected. Some schools not collected, some retirement buildings are not collected. But if you have a residential dwelling connected to a commercial building that'll accept. Uh, the residential recycling, but not the commercial recycling. Who's gonna know what recycling went into the box when they pick it up? Um, so it actually has created quite a large mess. Um, however. It does put it back onto the municipality to decide what's going to happen to these materials. Currently, the municipality has very limited. I C I, non-eligible sources. Um, you can recall when we came back with the negotiation with. Um, how much we were going to be losing during the transition by accepting commercial property. Recycling and non-eligible sources. Um, we were able to show the. At first they thought we had like, it was all based on M P A C assessment. And what the codes are, so anything above four hundred property code was not eligible. And for the municipality of Calvin, that meant TransCanada Pipeline. So there's nobody on there making recycling, uh, the railway. Uh, Bel Canada Buildings, uh, Bel Canada Towers, uh, cemeteries. Yeah, they're producing a lot of recycling.
So a park of trailer cars.
However, which have a condition that it could be, if there's a resident. Residential dwelling in the trailer park or and or seasonal dwellings, then they're exempt from that. So you can see.
It's confusing.
Yes, it's very confusing. However, that's why I hear, we're here. Uh, to get through that confusion and to actually put into detail for council to make a decision. Um, we are in each in Calvin that we really do not have a lot of. Commercial, like very limited commercial property, non-eligible sources. Um, currently, the municipality has agreements that also been on eligible already, which never allowed. For them to place recycling into our landfill. Therefore, we never, as a municipality, took care of the recycling. However, in saying this. There wasn't good recycling being accomplished. As most of the recycling from these entities were likely being placed in landfill. Uh, we also have non-eligible sources which are non-residents of Calvin. Uh, so that will include the residents with water. As well as a chaos park, which is currently in an agreement with the municipality. To accept this landfill material, however, not as recyclable material. Um. Samuel Champlain is one of those Columbia Forestry Products is another. And the Ecology Center, which was brought forth to council, uh, two meetings ago. Uh, so tonight's. Councils face with the decision of. Are we going to place separate bins for collection because it cannot be collected in residential collection? And being in depot makes it a bit more difficult as well because we just have bins, persons there, they take it and. And it goes into a bin, whereas opposed if we had curbside collection.
We did.
It would have been a way more worth, more strenuous because then these. People that have commercial entities in their municipality, they actually had a GPS locate. Every building, so the trucks knew where to pick it up, not to pick it up. So our job was much, much more easy because they don't have much. But the question is. Are we going to? Ask the non-eligible sources to contract out their own recycling pickup? Are we going to, wait, I got, you didn't look at the list?
Can I ask a couple of questions before? I I was looking at this non-eligible sources and and just. Cause I, I'm not asking a lot of this stuff, so please, uh, help me out with this. It says in here that um. Commercial farms are ineligible. We have uh, seven farms in the in the township. We have uh. Uh, and probably more. We have uh, Jacob Groves, J D uh. Uh, trucking and 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 farms. We have Rogers, the Albright's, the Graham's. They all have residents though.
Right.
Okay, they all have residents. And they're not only this commercial, so they're 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 they don't apply. Is that correct?
So what N is saying is we have about three.
Yeah.
Three forms without naming.
Trade commercial.
Naming who they are, because it shouldn't matter.
Okay. And then. Then we have one church, which is a place of worship.
Worship. Also residents there.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, I'm coming back to that question. And then we have Algonquin Outfitters, which is a commercial business, but there's a residence there.
So what we're saying is that NPAC has identified three businesses who are impacted by this.
Other than the ones we have agreements.
Other than the ones we have agreements.
Okay, so that leads me to my second question. We have these three businesses that are identified. Choice number one in your list here is we do nothing and tell them that they're responsible for.
Not that choice number one is just one of the choices. Yeah.
Both us, both us. So. What, so let me just take, we. Fictional business number one. We say we're not collecting your recyclable. They would have to then. Buy a bin or rent a bin, keep it in their backyard, fill that bin, pay to have it trucked into North Bay. And and pay the recycling fee. Is that correct? That's that's what they, those three businesses would have to do that. Columbia Forest Products, do they do that already now?
Yes.
So they already do that. Um, so.
Samuel Champlain.
Does.
Does that. Already are in an agreement with the municipality that does not allow them to recycle.
Okay. So if we went that route, we would be asking three people to. Buy bins and take care of themselves, so.
Or share.
Or share.
Share amongst.
What do you think is the likelihood of that happening?
Um, at first it wasn't known. Because until about six months ago, they didn't know where a MRF. Uh, a recycling facility where they actually.
Accept.
Material. They didn't even know where they were, they were going to have a MRF that would accept commercial recycling. Up till six months ago.
Yeah.
In our region. The closest was Pembroke or Sunbury. So it took a while to even be able to tell council any information because we really didn't know where we could. Hope that the commercial entities were able to take the recycling. However, as you can see recently in the recorder, uh, one of our neighbors has. Uh, G F L goes to their municipality and does pick up commercial recycling. So the likelihood of G F L on their way by picking up something to me is very high. Although I don't want to say use G F L, there really isn't much else. But there is. Obviously, commercial recycling occurring. Uh, along their path.
And can I bring something else up already? There's a. People believe that it didn't cost the municipality before when they dropped off, that we made money. That's not entirely true. We had to pay for. And so now they're paying our staff to manage their recycling bin. So we're being paid to manage a recycling bin and should there be. Our contract says, should we accept from any of the non-eligible sources, we will be fined.
Good.
So that's a, this is, this is imposed on us by the government and the government has said. The government hasn't said you decide municipalities how you want. Them to handle it. The government has said we will not accept.
Good. So my, I just one last question. The township of Loudon, I've had people come to me and say, we burn our garbage, we don't bring it to the the dump. The only thing we do is we bring the recycling because you guys make money on it.
Right, which is.
So going forward. They can't do that, correct?
Correct. Unless the council chooses one of the options presented.
Okay, but we're talking about the first option. So your second option is that we accept it. And we pay to ship it, but now we've got to have two extra recycling bins, correct?
Correct.
And we'd have to put those at the dump. Is that what we would do? And then we would have to. The the poor dump employees, somebody comes in and they say, well, I've got a bag full of bottles and cans. And then if they were from louder, they'd have to go to this bin. If they were from Calvin, they'd go to this bin. Is that correct? And.
Taxpayers would pay for that.
And the Calvin taxpayers would be paying for the louder people. Or these three businesses that you're talking about. To do the recycling.
Yes.
Which you've put in your report. And then what are the other two options? You you have four here.
The other option.
Yeah, it's five of them.
Was there five?
Yeah.
So. So we, the council can choose to not accept any recyclable material from a non-eligible source and you're done.
That's number one.
Right. However, the the burden would be on the non-eligible source to figure out what to do with the recycling. Except recyclables from non-eligible sources, including louder residents and chaos provincial park. At the cost of the municipal tax payers. Or accept recyclables from non-eligible sources that are only situated in Calvin. At the cost of the Calvin taxpayers. Which would exclude Chaos Park and louder. Except recyclables from non-eligible sources, including Chaos Provincial Park and louder residents. And charge a user fee based on the current fee schedule by law for the landfill.
Okay, just question on that. So what you're talking about is person from louder brings up a bag and puts it in that recycling bin, but they paid five dollars a bag or whatever. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Whatever that cost being looked like.
Can I just add something? Cause we missed it in the end, uh, as the current fee schedule by law, as amended from time to time. Because if we want this. Whatever was the state.
So those are the five.
Oh, you missed one more.
There's one. That's four.
Except, except recyclables from on non-eligible sources situated in Calvin. And charge a user fee based on the current user fee by law.
So only people from Calvin and say to louder, you you and to Algonquin Park.
Chaos.
Chaos. Uh, your honor.
Your honor.
Okay, so I'm gonna put you really big on the spot here. What is your recommendation?
Um, the council discussed.
The problem, the issue for me is that I have hard, a difficult time giving a recommendation. It's because some of these scenarios were unfamiliar of the tonnage. So we've never received. Recycling material from Samuel Champlain. A Columbia Forestry. Chaos. So the determination of how much tonnage and how many actual trips that needs to be removed is unknown.
So how do we know how much to charge if we've never accepted a bin from non-eligible sources? So all of these non-eligible sources, we have no idea how much they're going to contribute, meaning we don't know how much. How many times they're gonna have to come pick it up and empty it. So how do we know what to charge per visit per year? And we can't bill and invoice people because we have no mechanism to ever retrieve our money from bill and invoice them.
So your concern here is that if we say we're going to accept it from those three businesses. We also have to accept it from. Columbia Forest Products.
Well, that's your choice.
No. It means we don't know how much it's going to cost us. So how do we know how much to charge people? Or because it has to be a separate bin. And then the other issue is that Calvin staff. Check whether it's only recyclables going in there and the recyclables are not going into the.
Land.
Dump when we don't have clear bag, we're not enforcing the red policy. We can't make this the enemy, cannot be the recycling. Depot employees of ours who are under contract to obey the contract.
Right.
So we can't say. It's your fault that that ended up in there because we don't give you the mechanism in order to, our gate says clear bag policy. We don't enforce it like, and that's why every municipality around has clear bag policy. So that people aren't throwing that into the dump.
Into the. Part of the provincial policy, actually, is that there will be no more recycling in the landfill. If you see what the new. Uh, now like you can put foam containers from meatpacking, you can put cellophane bags, you can put. Uh. Chip bags now is, you can put coffee cups in, there's basically, you're down to compostable.
And.
And that is it left. Everything else, yeah, textile, everything else is basically recyclable.
So do you feel that there would be a threat? That if we said, you guys are on your own with your own recycling, that a lot of that recycling is gonna wind up in the dump?
I think there's high potential because honestly, we don't have a great recycling capturing.
And and let's face, I mean, I think the clear message here is that this is not council. This is not staff. This is the government of Ontario who have said we will no longer accept recyclable material. Unless these entities. Transport it and carry it themselves. So this is a way for us to say, do we want to do that to people or do we want to charge them the fee it will cost us? Or we want to absorb the costs? And who are you interested in absorbing costs for? Without charging people, does that include anybody who's out there that doesn't live here and pay taxes?
Right. Cause generally with the agreements, we've only have like agreements with some commercial, but not other commercials, so. I don't know what the determinant is for those agreements being in place when not all commercial entities have those agreements.
And the other part of this is that while we include Chaos here. Chaos, the other provincial park, I mean, for me, the government of Ontario issued this, why would we help them by? Accepting the recyclable.
I agree.
So Chaos. Samuel Champlain, Need and Ecology Center and the um, Columbia Forest, they're highly unlikely to now. Transport their recyclables to us and charge and be charged a fee here. They're gonna continue to do what they've always done. And that is have their own bin, have it have it transported. So. I believe that we shouldn't say invite them in because they're not going to. If we are inviting them in. That will have an impact on the fee that will, we will then incur. So let's not go there. That's the one recommendation that I would make to you is that all those who already have an agreement to not bring recyclables, we keep it that way.
Let me just ask a question, so it's not backing up Chaos. They right now bring just their recycling to us or do they also bring their dump?
No recycling.
So right now, all they do is they bring us a bin of garbage.
Right.
Full of recycling.
Full of recycling.
Exactly. They don't, they don't store.
So we had to, I mean, the two summers that I've been here, we've had to contact one park. Uh, like Samuel Champagne Park, let's get it out there. Um, uh, when we had previous staff here, they. They would take pictures and the year prior to coming here, they'd also approached the park. So last year, we did take a one, two, three approach. That said, if you continue to have so many recyclables, here are the photos, your staff is not recycling. Or probably, they do have a recycling bin, but they have to pay to transport it. So they would just throw it into the garbage, which ends up in our landfill.
Right. And it can't.
And it can't, and it can't.
Ensure that.
It should not. But staff has no mechanism right now to say no to anything because right now that's coming out of the bin and being thrown in. Now we have a provincial regulation that says no more recycled material shall go into. But we have no way for staff to be able to, even today. To do anything about that because they don't have, I mean, I would want to be that person working at the landfill, right? I mean, and every, just so that you know.
I'm concerned about that. The people working at the landfill, I think it's a separate issue too, right? But yeah.
Yeah, and that's why the ensuring compliance is there that you must choose one of these. We either give staff the tools to be able to enforce it. Or you do nothing and don't care what goes into the landfill.
All right, so I've talked enough. Let me go around the room.
Logical approach to this problem, I do. Um, you guys be the judge. So excited. So uh, we see, so just set up premise, so the old system as opposed to the new system, we do save money, correct? In our recycling operations.
Oh, one hundred percent.
So we're ahead financially from the old system, okay?
Why are we gonna put money into the landfill closure?
Fair enough, but we're ahead financially from the old system, so the problems, let's give them the benefit of the doubt. So they've helped us financially by changing the way they're doing all the recycling. However, we're frustrated because one piece of it is annoying and it seems stupid, okay? We have to recycle our own recycle here at the town hall. So as far as I'm concerned, we have to purchase, we have to have an ability to do that anyway. So what if we take care of our own recycle with some separate bins? We're already saving money, it serves as additional cost. We also then, we, the the word ethics was dropped. And we are a municipality, the point is to divide costs, that's the whole point of the government. Is then we take the other, um, call it small, small non-eligible sources. We can just lump them in with ours, there's a certain, there's a certain cost associated, I don't think it's gonna be astronomical. However, I do feel that we need to take the big players out and they need to handle their own. Um, because then it would flood my little idea and make it stupid. But if we just got two bins and we're just accepting recycle from. Uh, ourselves and two or three other businesses, residents of louder. I mean, this is not, you know, this is not gonna blow the bank, it's not an outrageous thing to do, we have to do it anyways, that's my theory.
So you're at three, right now you're at recommendation number three or two?
I'm at basically, it's, I'm at accept recyclables from all non-eligible sources, but but I wanna take out the big players. So I don't see that one in here.
Right.
Yeah, it's not an option.
It's not an option.
I guess because we would also need instruction from council to tell us. When to recognize the big players.
Yeah, wow, I'm willing to do that as a counselor, but this is my theory because once. The problem is my whole plan would go out the window, once you get a truckload of. I'm talking two small bins that we can, you know, two bins that we can.
Twenty yards.
Sure, twenty yard bins, but if you're getting, we're getting rained on with. Our cycles, that's gonna, the whole thing's gonna be stupid at that point.
So councillor Grant is yours then, recommendation three, accept recyclables from non-eligible sources. That are situated in Calvin at the cost of Calvin taxpayers. Ex- accept eligible sources excluding provincial parks, Canadian Ecology Centre and non-residents.
I, yeah, I think we should dig waters too because I don't think it's gonna blow the bank, I think there's an ethical reason. Is that where I, you know, it's my opinion, because I I just think it's, it's recycling.
Or you could charge them, that like they are today.
Yeah, I just, I just don't see, I would love to see how it pans out in real life, maybe on a trial basis, I just don't see how. I don't think that many extra bags, whether it be ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen bags, it's just gonna blow the bank on the, what we have to do anyways. That's where I'm at, like I just don't see how those numbers will. Will kill us.
Councillor Morton. We asked, uh, do we know how many bags are coming in from Kai- uh, louder?
Uh, no, uh, unfortunately, it was never charged for.
Even though we have a bylaw, we've just recently learned that they have not been charging.
Recycling.
Well, that's good, people aren't talking to the mayor because they're pretty sharp, so. Not even paying. Well.
But we do for landfill materials.
Well, we keep the bags going to the landfill. And and I, you're right, I didn't know that, I I knew that we weren't charging for recycling.
Even though the bylaw does say that they would pay, because again, people believe that it doesn't cost us, it does cost us.
Right.
Yeah, and there's a certain spirit of government and recycling and, you know, and dividing costs, so.
So I had to answer Phil's question. Do we know how many bags of landfill went, came from louder country?
Yes, we don't get a lot. Um, actually, we were discussing how much we say going to the highway seventeen.
Exactly. So they're telling residents to. Are, he's admitted at this council meeting, not this one, but.
I, I guess what I'm saying is that if you get a hundred bags from louder residents in a month.
In a year, maybe.
Okay, then you could assume you're gonna get a hundred bags of recycling.
It would hope, it would be hopeful.
Yeah.
And to someone's point, Dean, I think it's your point, right? Isn't the, the idea here to recycle?
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, because they have to help us save money, they're just trying to put into a big picture, right? Where like we can maybe still do some recycling without, and we have to do ours anyways, that's my point. So we gotta, so what are we gonna do for ours? Not recycle? I mean, we don't throw a landfill?
No.
Yeah, maybe we could, I just, you know, there's a cost associated with that anyways, so it's like, yeah, but there's an event or something.
Uh, this is maybe a stupid question out of context, but I'll ask again anyway. The church is attached to a residence. So if they're bringing garbage to the dump, isn't it residential then?
Well, technically, they could bring the residential portion of their recyclable to the recycling center. And if they have a function at the church, they're gonna take this. Material from the function of the church to the non-eligible source bin.
I see. Right.
Same as, uh, the commercial property owner at seventeen and highway six thirty. They would have to.
Yeah, because they lived in that.
What is in their residential bin and what what is in their bin that is for the business.
Famous campground.
Yeah.
If we took the approach that, uh, that that Calvin taxpayers funded it. We could try that on a trial basis for six months or a year and then adjust if a fee schedule is required. Based on volumes, then that could be.
I would think that would be a great suggestion as we did discuss. Uh, with the province of Ontario, what it would look like if we still accepted. Commercial recycling. And would there be a formula like there was during the transition where we would lose three percent? Or we would have to contribute three percent? Um, unfortunately, they cannot propose a formula because they're hopeful that with this provincial. Mass recycling program, that we'll see an influx of recycling material in our. Recyclables tonnages that we do collect. Therefore, they would be unable to understand what that looks like if we put the commercial into the system. So will they bring forward something in the next year? At the probability. They said that is, who knows? But if it wasn't for a trial basis, it's just that I need to revise the province of Ontario with the motion of council to say what we're doing.
So with Dean Grant's suggestion. He's saying those three smaller entities, we accept. And it, and we put ours in there as well. But they classify under non-eligible sources, commercial and industrial in the same little block here. So would there be? A conflict where you're saying, we'll take it from some enough from others? No?
No.
Or.
Not with the current agreement users, so after. Uh, my personal opinion, if someone else comes in here and opens up a factory. What are, what are the factors that make them non-eligible to use your non-eligible bin? Uh.
Uh, councillor Latimer, you haven't spoken, did you wanna?
We could reuse that in the future at the planning board.
Right. Councillor Latimer.
Yes, I do. This is a perfect example of one size fits all, if we were North Bay, we wouldn't be having this conversation because there are options. Uh, I am in favor of recommendation number two. And. I think it's a four thousand dollar a year cost. Estimated. And we're already providing louder with fire protection and landfill, so I don't see the big deal about. Doing something with Calvin taxpayer money to provide recycling as well. Uh, this would also be a good topic for a committee of the whole, I think, maybe going forward because it'll have to change.
So can I just, uh, comment on that one? The reason we didn't include this one in in that committee of a whole meeting that we were hoping that bylaw would get passed on the sixteenth. Is that we need to have this in place for January one. And if we held that committee of a whole meeting December nineteenth. Bring a recommendation back to council, we wouldn't have met the deadline. So that's why it wasn't included in the, just so that you all know that, that's why we couldn't include it in the committee of a whole meeting December nineteenth.
Okay, well, I think this is, this is probably going to be a, a discussion in the future as well about, uh. This, uh, policy, this government policy and how to manage it. And again, if we have a, a factory just shows up and. And they have to, we have to make a decision about what to do with their recycling material or tell them, no, we're not accepting them, but we will accept, um, others. You know, it's, I think. I think we definitely need, doing this as well, this, uh, recommendation two probably saves us on our landfill replacement. Or closure cost in the future because when I go to the landfill, I see plastic bags full of. I've seen them full of plastic bottles or cans, like people just don't. They just don't recycle, why bother, it's, uh. Too much work. Um, we do need to drive towards that for the sake of our landfill and plus it's also. I'm not a, uh, you know, a hard, ardent environmentalist, but I do believe in recycling. So recommendation two.
It is very close to your suggestion, the only thing I'm, I'm, I'm confused about in recommendation two, it says all non-eligible sources.
Right.
So are we not then saying that we're gonna start taking it from the ecology center?
You're saying I'm sure.
That's the difference. I, I like, I don't think we should be taking it from the Champlain Provincial Park and I don't think we should be taking it from the, the, the kiosk provincial park. I, I, I think that's a, this is a provincial program and I think it's a provincial responsibility to deal with their own recycling. I am.
Let's specify then, let's specify which ones are the non-eligible sources. That you said there are three, three in the township and then louder and, uh, kiosk.
I, I agree with you about the louder residents because of what Andrew said, a hundred bags of garbage in a year. It might be a hundred bags of recycling in a year. And i- if it's a hundred bags of recycling, maybe we'll limit. The hundred bags of landfill going to dump, especially when you say things like. And excuse my ignorance, I did not know that you could put in those meat trays, I, I put those.
It's just like a fact of twenty twenty six.
Oh, okay.
The new regulation with the post-transition, it's like meat trays.
Self. Yeah, see, I, I, I didn't know that, so now. If you include louder residents and you say you can take that stuff out of your garbage and put that in the recycling. And you don't, we won't charge you for that. Then you can diminish the amount of landfill that's going in as, as well.
Great thing, just for.
So, so that's a great thing, increases, but I, 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 again, I, I, I can't agree with parks. That, that, to me, just doesn't make sense, especially since we're not doing the ecology center and we're not doing Columbia Forest Products, so. Uh, there has to be a hybrid recommendation there, I, I don't know how you would work that.
Oh, it's there.
Is it?
I mean, we can make it, recommendation number two, accept recyclables from all non-eligible sources. Except for provincial parks, the Canadian Ecology Centre, Columbia Forest.
That's it, and that's it.
That's it.
That's it, all day.
At the cost of Calvin taxpayers, we have to add that in so that we, they know we're not charging them.
Right, sure.
Just to clarify, only thing, I, councillor Latimer, he said that we're already paying for fire protection in louder. And we're not.
You're not.
Don't.
That's covered by the problems.
Right.
But, but it's Calvin firefighters who go down there.
Right. And then it's billed back.
After the problems.
Right.
That was something that was arranged afterwards.
So with the, the, the louder thing to. To justify that, you could limit the amount of landfill that they are bringing to our. If you're a resident of louder, right now, there is no dumping louder. So you have to bring your bag of garbage to Calvin township and pay your fee to put it in the dump, that's, that's what your choices. If you say they have to get, take care of their own recycling, we all know that they're not gonna do that. So, uh, what we have to do is encourage them to take stuff out of their five dollar bag. Bags going to the landfill and put it into the recycling. And. It's a win-win perhaps.
The win is, is that they don't, if the, if the council doesn't choose to let louder pay. They would have less payable landfill material.
Right, exactly.
Which brings us to part B in this motion.
We got that one flipped.
We're good, or should we talk about it or?
Uh, are you, I, I haven't told you, councillor Ensign, are you in agreement with? The idea of number two excluding those three and accepting the other non-eligibles?
Absolutely.
Okay, and, uh. Uh, councillor Latimer, you had said all non-eligible, so you, uh, in agreement to exclude the provincial parks and the. Uh, the industrial.
Yeah, that was, that was my suggestion. Make, specify who, who the non-eligible sources are. And you tell that.
And councillor Morton, you're, you're agreeing, yes? All right, so that's sort of the agreement, let's go on to ensuring compliance.
Apparently, the bylaw is not strong enough for, uh, it does say in the bylaw that staff will to inspect the load, however. It doesn't really say like that staff's supposed to go in there and open people's garbage.
I expect the, the transport truck back and then themselves. But, uh.
Oh, good.
No, so what will happen though then, it currently is that we are charged the penalty when that recycling is dirty recycling.
Yeah, we are, it's unhappy.
We, we are charged heavy.
I know, but you charge.
So now it's when we. Enforce the bylaw, reinforce the bylaw that says. Clear bag policy.
And now recyclables down to the landfill. Zero.
It's confusing, though.
Yeah.
You know, the parks don't recycle.
Well, they're not coming to us, though.
With dump?
For recycle, for dump they are, but we've refused, but we told them already that we will start refusing all of it. So if you, if I meant my. Today, and the disadvantage we have, it's not an advantage that we have landfill service versus pickup. Because if you're in Matawa as an example, and you're a non-eligible source. They simply will not pick it up. And if they see recycling in your landfill, they don't pick it up, they don't take it out for you. They leave you one note that says, next time, we're not picking your garbage up anymore. They see one recycling piece. What we don't give our staff right today is the ability to determine. Whether or not recyclables are finding their way into the landfill because we're not. Where it says we have a clear bag policy and that's why everywhere around us has clear bag policies in order to limit. The recyclables from going into the landfill. It doesn't mean they're opening it up, which is the only thing they could do today, is crack open a bag and look in. Now they can see through, uh.
Okay, bag.
Whether or not there are recyclables in there and say, no, sorry, we can't take this because it has recyclables.
So. I worry about the staff there. And we just talked about, you know, abusive staff in an earlier situation. And I worry about cantankerous people when you say, we can't take this. Like, it's one thing when you're driving a garbage truck and you're going and picking it up at the corner and you say, we're not taking it. And here's a note saying, we're not taking it, but it's another thing to confront someone face to face and say. No, we're not taking this, how, how do we deal with that?
So I think like there would be parts of the bylaw, right, so. Perhaps we charge. I think we should do an education process, however, first of all. Start warning the public that this is coming forward, the reasoning why. Because the reasoning why is truly shouldn't be arguable.
Well, it isn't arguable, but I just don't wanna put the staff at harm's way.
But if we start with an education process. That's already done.
And we have.
Starting the education process. Um, here's your fair warning, here's your last warning, here's a little love letter that comes out and we hand them out. There will be no more acceptance after this certain date, I guess people, because the big, largest complaint in this. Change of using the clear bag is what am I supposed to do with all the black ones I got? That costs twenty bucks. But then we have to, so we try and give them time to get rid of these twenty dollars worth of bags. And then we have a certain cutoff date, and that is the end date of all end dates. Uh, we can charge if they should bring a black bag, every time you bring your black bag, it'll be five bucks. Whether you're a resident or a non-resident, if you don't wanna pay for your garbage, however. You'll bring a clear bag, you'll be charged five dollars and you get to recycle.
You know what, I, I, that's a good policy. Because it takes. I, I'm, I'm afraid of giving the staff. You're forcing them to confront people and say, oh, you've got stuff in here. If, if, if they say, well, the policy is if you bring a black bag, it's five dollars. But now you run into the problem that you're telling me that. The, the province won't let us put that recycling in there one way or the other, so they put. So they put.
Not a reason to be at that point. Provincial policy states that we will be at a point where recycling materials no longer allowed in the landfill.
And we're not alone, we are alone in not already enforcing it that way.
Oh, no, no, Doc, I, I, I have no trouble with the, we can sit here in this room and say, yes, we should enforce it. But I don't know if I'd want to be that guy or girl standing there. And when somebody comes in and they've got ten bags of garbage, oh, no, we're not taking that, we're not taking that, we're not taking this. Like, that's threatening.
Well, but it's a long process. It's an educational process. You make sure you've captured your seasonal residence, you get through the summer.
So we've had.
Take six months.
Yeah, we've been, we've been, we've been including staff in this discussion since long before Anne was here, when I held that first regional meeting. When this whole recycling thing became real, if you recall, you attended, with every municipality, I think eight or nine of them were. Sitting in the building, we included our staff in that. We have been talking to staff since Anne's got here also, so before. So staff knows this is coming also, they know, but what they're looking for is supportive counsel by implementing a policy that allows them to say, and the code of conduct is there also, right? No different. The code of conduct is there. It's no different than, and, and I feel for, and I said this at the very beginning of this discussion. I do feel for landfill staff, but that is no different than Trish or I at the front desk when taxes go up. I worked in French, I had hard to pay taxes.
It's true.
And we have to sit there and try to tell people about your taxes went up because this was a, it's, it's the same in a different way. So staff is prepared at the landfill because we prepared them. We have been promoting that this is coming in newsletters. We know we did get the gray and blue boxes a little bit ago with those pieces. So we have been preparing staff. Staff is very aware of this coming tonight. They are looking for support in order to, to make this happen and wouldn't want to be them either.
And my question for council. Why are we expecting kickback from the residents and not recycle?
Because I see it every time I go to the desk.
Right.
I, I.
But is that, does that make it right?
No, it makes it wrong.
Right.
But I'm, I'm just saying that I'm, I'm just worried for the staff. I think we, all right, so let me, let me put my worry into reality. How do you deal with it? I think you'd have to have more people at the dump. I, I don't think you can have one or two people there and have somebody inspecting what's being dropped out of garbage. I see pickup truck, okay, I drive in, I have two bags of garbage. Right now I'm using clear bags. So I go back and I take my bag out and I throw it in. Nobody watches what I do. Nobody asks. Beside me, they ask when I drive in, how many bags of garbage do you have? Oh, I have two and I have one recycling. Okay.
And there's nobody inspecting? There's still not inspecting?
No, 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 nobody's checking anything.
That's nothing you can check when it's in a black bag.
Yeah, but I have clear bags or, so I drive down, I throw them over the edge and I drive back. But while I'm driving there, a pickup truck pulls up and he's got six bags of garbage. And I see them throwing recycling over the edge. So now I think, okay, so now you better take that person away from that little hut and take them down to the back of the, the dump to be inspecting the bags as they come out. And then this guy in the pickup truck, he's got his six, eight, ten bags that he's throwing out of, of, of the back of his pickup truck. And you're going to tell him, no, no, we're not taking that. No, 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 we're not taking that. And I know that's going to cause confrontation. So that's what I'm worried.
So the problem in what you just explained happens when you go to the landfill is that the reason the person is at the hut, like every other municipality that has a person at the hut, that is that they are then and they're supposed to inspect it. That is the job of the person at the hut.
They'll never do.
Thank you for reporting that. And, and that, we've had meetings over the last year and a half.
Now, maybe they don't do it with me and they do it with everybody else. I don't know, but I'm, I'm just.
And there has been discussion as well, like obviously if you see someone bringing in a few bins of recycling and you see their garbage and it has a couple of cans in it, well, they're, they're trying to recycle.
Because they only have two cans. We know that they're.
Like there has to be some sort of.
Okay.
I think if they were going to check, so maybe checking the councilors. Well, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't look good for your counselor to come here tonight and say, well, they didn't check me today.
Right.
And I'm thinking, well, yeah, that's kind of like shitting on the staff. But.
I'm not, I'm not shitting on the staff. I'm, I'm.
Yeah, you didn't know that that was already the sort of touchy place.
Okay, have they ever checked your, your bags?
I wouldn't.
You're not going to say it, you please.
Anyway, yeah, that's a discussion I need to clear.
All my bags are cleared.
I mean, that there sense, if all the recycling goes and the government pays for it to be taken away, that's less money that the municipality has to pay in closing a landfill and opening a new.
Right, I agree.
Government's Ontario will pay for all of them.
Well, I, recommendation one is the one that makes sense to me, but how about you, Dee?
I mean, if I have to choose, I think they're both hard, kind of hard-line stances between one and two. I don't think they stay allowed, they were allowing any gray in those two recommendations, but I, for a gray approach. So if I have to, you know, there was lots of discussion. The juice, I don't think the juice is worth the squeeze on recommendation one. And because there's no other option, I'm going to have to support recommendation two. That's it.
Counselor Morton? I like the, and I'm gonna say, and I'd like, I'd like your thinking about that. Eventually you're going to charge five dollars a bag for the black bags. So only one goes, when you're going to start that, because I've got about a hundred bags I gotta get rid of.
And oh, and then we have the other bylaw. There's another part of this, and that's, we'll bring forward the bylaw that we.
We'll bring forward the bylaw for review. Um, which will have a process in place. It's just, I don't think it's, uh, we're put in there for a week writing that if the council doesn't want to support.
So that's why we have to do nothing. And the next one.
So we have, I have recommendation one, I have two, he has two, Councilor Morton, one or two?
One.
One? Councilman Ensign, two? Counselor Lautimer?
Most people don't need rules to do the right thing. And I don't think we're ready yet to do recommendation number one. I'm, recommendation two is my choice and I think we move towards recommendation one in the future. But I don't think we're there yet.
Right, so we have three to two, or recommendation two.
Okay, and then turn page over to one one.
Just, oh. Okay, you're talking about three, that's the.
The first was to ensure compliance and the thing, do nothing.
Oh, I see.
That's not ensure compliance. So now you want a penalty, do not penalize landfill users that place recyclables in the landfill. Or strengthen the bylaw, if you're saying we're not, we don't, we don't. If you're saying do nothing to ensure recyclables are not finding their way, it doesn't make sense that we have a bylaw that penalizes them for it if you don't care that it's going into the landfill.
It's because we don't care. You're giving us very like wide.
Yeah, it's like, it's like, make a person be a terrible person.
You don't care.
It's more complicated.
Do you have a suggestion?
Education.
Do you have some suggestions? Yeah, I mean, I'll probably get laughed in the room, but I think like in the middle, I mean, it just, it's juice worth the squeeze. I want to avoid the confrontation, but you know, let's say someone's, maybe we give a ticket, like a red ticket, you know, and you just like, you just hand it to them, okay? Now this is going to sound silly, laughing in the room, I don't care. But you know, it, it's a joke, but if the same person keeps getting a ticket twenty, thirty, forty times, it's like, you know, like, let's, instead of, like in this fragment, it says ban or it's supposed to say this is refusal of all future garbage. It's like, one is quite extreme to like, refuse all future garbage. The other is like, you know, let's sort of persuade this person, like, because it's not life or death. That's where I'm at. So I, some sort of middle ground, it's not, because the issue is, it's like, it's becoming an issue, like speed limits. It's just, it's becoming a real controversial thing and I don't think it needs to be.
And Councilor Lautimer said, like, if we all want, want, that we want, or you guys are voting for two because we want to work toward.
Yes.
So like, that's where your middle ground is. We have.
Let's find some.
One and probably just too rigid and it has to be modified. I feel like it's, uh, progress put into it. Like you said about an education thing, is this going to be done over a year? Are you going to do it to thirty days? Do it in thirty days, it's not going to work.
We've been doing it for a year.
But nobody's enforcing the fact that you use.
Yeah, and that.
And nobody's looking in the trunks.
Yeah.
Or, and so I mean, like, until you get to that, that part of the education, that's going to take time. It can't be done. You can't say, okay, we're going to do it starting now and starting in January, it's a five-dollar fine for using a black bag. You're only talking six, thirty days. It'd have to go like almost a whole year.
I agree. I think September myself, but.
Just before the election, thank you.
Tell me how we don't have to use that for political reasoning.
Okay, so we got in the first one, recommendation three, uh, sorry, accept recyclables from all non-eligible sources, excluding provincial parks, Canadian Ecology Center, Columbia Forest. Um, at the top, the Calvin taxpayers, ensure compliance, do nothing to ensure that recyclables are not finding their way into the landfill. But that's immediate though, because we need to do this. You need to do this as of January one.
Yeah, that's provide the province.
We have to tell them that we're.
That we have council support to, and what are we doing with commercial recycling?
And how are we ensuring that? That's what we.
How do we ensure not getting in the landfill?
This is what we need to provide the, uh, the government of Ontario with before January first.
Well, I, I don't think being the garbage recycling police and having someone inspect bags, I, I'm not a big fan of it. I'm not going to be next month or next year either, but if it's the will of council as a whole, then that's the way it goes. But right, I'm just not a fan of having a landfill attendant in, looking around or, hey, shake, 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 what do we got here?
So we did have a choice though, if I can just for a minute, we did have a choice back then in that we would man the landfill to ensure that that agreement was going to be in place. Or that we would have them come out and man the landfill. And this council chose to man the landfill and the agreement and to manage the agreement, which doesn't buy up all of this. So that's a choice that counts to me if I'm entering for that agreement.
Like, we have to tell the province what we're doing, but we can say, here's what we're doing. We're, we're encouraging residents through an education process to recycle and not put it in the landfill. But we, you know, we don't have to hold their hand and, and walk them through that process. It's, it's, people will do what they do.
And some landfills, like there is probably beside you and you will not put it in there. Uh, for instance, our closest city, you have a choice. You can put it in the landfill, not, uh, separated, but you pay two hundred fifty dollars a ton, that's not extra.
My landfill inspects and does not allow me to not put recyclables or outside pay a fine.
And the clear bag is for the quick visualization of the inspection. It's not about them going into the bag and opening it. Right now, when it comes through in a black bag.
We can't tell.
I don't expect staff to open it, eh, hypodermics, broken glass, uh, et cetera. So I don't believe any staff member should open up a black garbage bag of garbage. So with that clear bag system, opaque bag system, there is no way for visual inspection.
Can we move towards, can we move towards a phased approach to, move to, a phased approach to using clear bags rather than January first or whatever it is, this is.
May I suggest that. Uh, direct staff to bring forth the clear bag policy, which would outline educational process dates.
I like that.
Pays over what, twelve months, six months, nine months? I think twelve months personally. If you want to educate people, some people won't, I mean, it's. Why do you have to, why do you have to tell people to recycle? It doesn't make sense to me. It's if, they just, are they lazy or, or is it just, uh, nobody's going to tell me what to do with my garbage?
But if, if council has the appetite, that's fine. I was just, I suggest.
Well, I, I, I'll stand up and say that I like your approach to come up with a timeline of phased in, uh, cross-education. And, uh, I, I mean, I've been going to the North Bay Recycling Center uh, to bring in paint tins. And if I go in with non-paint tin, they say to me, sorry, it's very clear you're allowed to bring in eight. They'll take the one back. Um, so they do inspect, but at the same time, I brought in a couple of empty paint tins. And they said, oh, well, these should not go into our system. They should go into the metal bin, but we'll take them in. So there is a bit of flexibility there that, that's what you're suggesting, that we have a flexible, phased-in timed process. Is that correct?
Correct. Is everybody that looks through.
How does everybody else feel about that?
I agree. I feel that education component should be on the benefits of recycling and all the reasons why. And the reasons why and the costs of, uh, putting things in the landfill that shouldn't be there. Not the bag opaqueness. I don't, I think it should be a recycling. Not how, we're going to educate you to use a clear bag so we can catch you in fear and violation. More, let's educate you on the benefits of recycling so that they can, from an internal standpoint, perhaps recognize there's some benefits to it and do it not just because of there's a clear bag. And if there's a clear bag thing, well, then people will probably just find a way to circumvent that policy. The people that aren't recyclers aren't going to be converted to recyclers.
I, I agree with you, John, and people will find ways to cheat and they'll put the, the metal tins right in the middle of the plastic bag and surround it with garbage on the outside. That's going to happen, no doubt it will. But my big concern, like I said, is for the landfill attendants. Um, and if they can just look at a bag and say, oh, well, this is not appropriate. And by March the thirty-first, I won't even be able to accept this, but right now this is not appropriate. But I'll let it go this time until March the thirty-first. That's easier than if people come in with a black bag and they have no way of, they have no way of approaching it. So we're not, we, I think the idea of the clear bags is not so much because it's the ultimate solution. I think it's to support the, the workers in the landfill. How are, how else are they going to? As Anne says, you're not going to open a black bag.
No, I would. Yeah. Hmm, just don't do it. That's why I just don't feel like the juice is worth the squeeze here. It's like garbage wars, like we just like, it, it, I just not convinced it's that big of a problem, that's all. Let's do education, focus on education and move forward. That's my opinion, which is different from some of the others.
Part, part of that education, as numerous good people have mentioned, is that the community thinks we're making money off recycling and we're not.
It's telling us, you know.
You gotta convince them that we're not.
And some people are always just gonna, there's gonna be a few bad apples that are always going to do it. I just don't think they should be banned for life. I just.
Well, they think they're getting, we're getting recycling paid with coming money to the community twenty years ago. And they think that's still the same. I remember when I first moved here, you had to take the top off the bottle.
Yeah.
Remember, the mayor of the dump used to always jump all over you because of the doctor on the bottom. What's the big deal? Plastic, but. Those were all things that would be.
Okay.
Section A, what if we skip section two and do a strengthened by law, twenty twenty-four, forty sixteen by law to establish and maintain a system of disposal of garbage and other refuse to include a phase in educational form, uh, component to encourage recycling.
I like it.
Bring that back to you. Is that what I'm hearing anyway?
I think that's.
That could include facing opaque things.
I, I, I like.
Some year. Pardon me? Some year, that's not the election here.
Okay, can you read that again? Can you read one more time? I apologize.
Yeah, so, uh, strengthened by law, twenty twenty-four, forty-six, being a bylaw to establish and maintain a system of disposal of garbage and. of garbage and other refuse to include a phased in educational component to encourage recycling.
I know, that's a great sport.
So it's just now where we talked about, uh, except recyclables from all and this one. Are you good with that? Madam Public Works Superintendent?
I am good with everything.
That's what I heard council say, I think.
I think so.
Chris, are you good with the words in both?
I don't know, give yours, I know.
Watch the video.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, when you talk about staff, have you run this all by staff and they, they're prepared? They know this is, the crunch is gonna come and.
Well, they know. That has always been pro.
Well, they're gonna do.
Particularly, some staff are more passionate than others, to be honest. Unless, and then.
And, and I need to repeat again, this is not new, it's only new to Calvin.
Right, I know, it's there. I just.
We're different than everyone else all around us in not doing this already.
That's fine.
Than every single, yeah.
The education process is a little romance. Calvin taxpayers.
I like, I like the resolution. I like the resolution, we move people towards recycling rather than introducing the garbage Gestapo at the, uh. At the dump inspecting, uh, and then you have to try and find a way to beat them, move people towards it, educate them.
Probably it off of, uh, and throw it in behind the dump, people are just driving there in their ATVs and dump whatever they want anyway.
They don't drive to the landfill to pull up the one on the highway.
Okay, just let me read this here. And, and, and just, i- i- if this is what we're agreeing to. Uh, recommendation two is accept recyclables from all non-eligible sources, um, including louder residents. Um, and, uh, at, and provided the cost of Calvin tax, taxpayers except for the provincial parks, industrial facilities, and the ecology center. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, except recyclable materials from all non-eligible sources, including non-residents or taxpayers of Calvin. That could be bold or too, right?
Oh, I see, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's true. Except recyclables from non-eligible sources. Except recyclables from all non-eligible sources, excluding provincial parks, the Canadian Ecology Center, Columbia Forest.
Can I just change Columbia Forest to industrial? It's the, it's an.
Industrial facilities?
Industrial facilities, industrial facilities.
And we also have to put in there, uh, Adam C A O, in a separate container. Attach me some kind of language in there, just to, for the motion to go back to the province, let's say.
Okay, accept. All right.
After the cost of tax, uh, Calvin tax shares.
And then recommendation two, do nothing that, uh, to ensure that recyclables aren't.
We're just gonna keep that right over there. We're just gonna move straight to three.
All right.
Strengthen by law twenty twenty-four, forty-six, being a by law to establish, uh, uh, um, to include a phased in educational component to encourage recycle.
Right. Is that.
That's what I hear is the direction of council, yeah.
All right.
They need a mover to second. Twenty back, two pages back.
All right.
We're both meeting second, and I have three calls, who are asking if we're ready to move in.
Okay, so, uh, mover and a secondary for the treatment of non-eligible. Uh, of institutional, commercial, and industrial, uh, recycling post-transition, moved by. Counselor Grant, seconded by Counselor Manson. And I'm gonna ask you to read the second half of this, uh, the province of Ontario through the Blue Box Program. Defines eligible sources as any resident or facility of an eligible community, and only these eligible sources fall under the producer responsible for blue box material, whereas the province has here thereby determined that all generators of recyclable materials are non-eligible. That all other generators of, of recyclable, uh, materials are non-eligible sources, including but not limited to industrial, commercial, and institutional properties, businesses, daycares, places of worship, post-secondary institutions, nonprofit or charitable organizations, shelters, campgrounds, and trailer parks in certain municipal or community facilities. And whereas the province, uh, has further established that these, uh, non-eligible sources are not permitted to bring their blue box material to the municipal depot unless another party pays for the collection, hauling, or processing of these materials, since producers are not responsible for them under OREG three ninety-one dash twenty-one. And whereas council for the municipality of Calvin received a very, very, very detailed report outlining the options of how to treat blue box materials originating from non-eligible sources, including whether to allow continued access to the landfill depot to prohibit access or to implement cost recovery of third-party funded agreements. And whereas council, after review and deliberation, wishes to formally select its preferred policy. Now therefore, uh, uh, be it resolved that council of municipality of Calvin hereby conforms to its decision regarding the management of blue box materials from non-eligible sources in accordance with OREG three ninety-one, uh, slash twenty-one, and selects the following programs.
Accept recyclables in a separate container from non-eligible sources, from all non-eligible sources, excluding provincial parks, the Canadian Ecology Center, and industrial facilities at the cost of Calvin taxpayers. And to strengthen by law twenty twenty-four, forty-six, being a by law to establish and maintain a system of disposal and of garbage and other refuse to include a phased in approach, a phased in educational component to encourage recycling.
Perfect. And be it further resolved. Did I turn the page? The municipality of Calvin reaffirms its commitment to compliance with, uh, provincial regulations while maintaining responsible and sustainable waste management practices, and will continue to advocate for fuller producer responsibility for all recycled, uh, recycled materials. This is a recorded vote that I'm, uh, requesting, uh, so. Counselor Grant, yay your name.
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Latimer, yay your name. Oh, I'm sorry, this is. Okay. Counselor Manson?
Yay.
Counselor Morton, yay. And I M A as well, so the motion is carried, thank you very much. Support for United Counties of S D G Resolution Number one twenty-five Conservation Authorities. This is a, again, we're back to bringing conservation complaints. So, uh.
Uh, this goes with eight point eight, so now we're on administrative matters, eight point eight, sorry, go ahead.
So, yes, so, uh, this is, uh, uh. A motion to support what another municipality is talking about as far as the province taking over all the, um. Conservation. Counselor Grant, any comments, questions?
I, I mean, I read it, I don't know who, like, it just seems like it's very, it's makes, I don't know, sure, I'll support it, but I don't really know what solid objective is, but just starts to do a good job. That's what I read, but anyway.
Province is gonna do what they're gonna do.
Yeah, it says here, like, it just says that they wanted to balance the expertise and capacity of the local stuff, okay, well, of course. Counselor Manson?
Um, the way, when I read it earlier, uh, I interpreted it as they wanted more local, uh, input and, and control and power, more like the current system.
Correct, that's what I understood too.
Yeah, so I, I think that the, um. The process underway, and, uh. So I, I'm, I'm not interested in supporting this.
Okay, Counselor Latimer?
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Manson, the ship has sailed, I'm not really in favor of supporting it. I mean, it's probably a good idea, but, and pointless.
Well, there you go.
When is it meeting consultation over? December twelfth? There's a community consultation for us anyway.
Our next meeting is not till December the tenth.
No, I mean, there's a community consultation on the ministers.
And so, that's why we're wearing the impression, like, we, our committee's got a meeting. We meet every week basically, three or four times, and sometimes for five and six hours, but the, uh.
But the Ontario government's.
The government's taking public consultation, goes December twenty-second. And, you know, like I said. Go ahead, do it, you complain all you want, it's not gonna happen. If you look at the map, Northern Ontario is, yeah. Like, there's three little areas all spread out, and there's all these voids in between. They don't care about, this is all about building house stuff, so Ontario. But nothing to do with conservation affairs.
All right, um, everybody's had a chance to comment, um, let's, uh. Get a mover to secondary, and we'll build on the issue. Counselor Morton moves. Counselor Grant. Whereas the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry have requested support from municipalities calling uh, of the government of Ontario to maintain local independent municipally governed watershed-based conservation authorities to ensure strong local representation in decisions related to municipal levies, community-focused service delivery, and the protection of the management of con- uh, conservation lands. Now therefore be resolved that the council for the Corporation of Municipality Calvin supports United Countries of, uh, Counties of S D G Resolution twenty twenty-five, one fifty-nine. Furthermore, that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Ontario Ministry of Environment of Conserv- uh, Conservation of Parks, Nipissing and P P Vic Fidelity, AMO, Roma, and its originator. All those in favor of supporting the motion? One. And Counselor Latimer in favor or against?
I'm not in favor.
All those, uh, uh, against the resolution? So the motion fails. All right. Uh, Public Works Superintendent, uh, report.
Can I make it fast?
Yes, go.
Uh, we're putting a float together, it'll be about ice fishing, we actually got a good-sized trailer to borrow this year. You know, from our local residents. Uh, we're gonna make it about, uh, within the share as country Christmas, so we're going to do a fishing, ice fishing float. So if anyone wants to join us, uh, we'll be in Madowell on December sixth.
Can you give us a time?
I can do my best, I, I can't answer that right now, but, uh. I think it's around six-ish, but don't quote me, I'll send that.
Maybe meeting here is a better idea than, can we transport everybody instead of last year, you know, who you had to.
You would have to drive the back of a trailer if I was something, and.
They usually stage up at the.
Walk last year, yeah.
Maxwell Pottery's doing a, an old house fat day on, on, on the Saturday.
It's a bake sale.
And then there's the bake sale and community, uh, craft sale here as well. But I'm sure by six o'clock, they'll be winding down those.
Well, they'll be done by then, yeah, but there, I, I had a meeting I was at just recently, they said there's actually five, four or five big community sales that weekend, or that day in, uh.
Oh, but this is only.
No, I mean, I'm talking about like Papinol, Madowell.
So we can still get up to the float.
If you wish, I'll, I'll send you a time, and immediately.
They're gonna be having, uh, like sleds with being pulled by our ATV. And they've arranged that, the, our fire department's gonna be there doing slave rights during the day, starting at like ten in the morning. So it's an all-day event.
Regional.
Now, our fire department is doing the, a thing in the parade as well?
Don't, yeah, they always do.
So, you're, are you looking for names tonight, or you're just?
Uh, no, I'll send out an email, if you show up, you show up.
All right.
I like it.
I like it, that's my kind of invite. All right, anything else that you wanted to add?
Uh, we do have a big, uh, meeting with our, our first meeting, I'm committee of the whole regarding levels of service, but I'm busy getting that together. Uh, so it can be presented. Um, the road needs study should be presented at the next meeting of council.
Oh, wow.
Um, uh, the survey was, uh, completed, however, they had to do a revisit. So that should be coming back in the new year. Um, we have all our trucks ready, it'd be nice if the roads would either make up their mind and freeze or stay thawed because of place havoc on the roads, and haven't seen sunshine in three damn days.
The, um, temperature tonight is not freezing, and it's gonna be five degrees again tomorrow, it was six today, so.
And minus nine by the next day.
Yeah, that, that's hard in the moment, for sure.
Yeah. Uh, so with that, in saying that, we should have a good season to get that rig ready then as well. I don't wanna keep it short, I've talked long enough about it, thank you.
Uh, all right, so, um, to accept the Public Works, uh, Superintendent's report. Hoover, Phil Morton, and, uh, John Manson. Uh, whereas the Public Works Superintendent has provided a report to the council, and therefore be resolved that council accepts the report, all those in favor. Counselor Latimer?
Hi.
So that is carried. Agencies, boards, committees, and, uh. Phil, uh, uh, Counselor Morton, uh, you're up first with the conservation authority, but.
I think I've covered it on several topics tonight, including the fact that the, uh, our next meeting is December the tenth and consultation on the new amendments, or, of it till December twenty-second.
Good, thank you very much. Uh, East Nipissing Planning Board, uh, uh. The C A O and I met, and we, uh, discussed some issues with the municipal affairs about the planning board, and it. Uh, and you'll be surprised to hear that we reached a resolution that both Dean and I were very surprised at, that we would, uh, look for quotations for a planner to start making. Uh, uh, planning assessments of, uh, now, nothing's finalized yet, but it's moving in a positive direction.
I'm very proud of you too.
Or does not only have a planner record?
Well, uh, in so much as each of the municipalities has a planner of record. But the planning board doesn't. So that's all I'll say about, uh, the, the, the planning board, we are, uh, looking at a, a number of applications. And I'm kind of pleased that I'm seeing a lot more in Calvin. Uh, we, we have probably four now that are from Calvin, so there seems to be some interest in, in, uh. Severnesses in Calvin, which bodes well. Physicians' improvement, uh, haven't met since the last meeting. Madowell Regional Police Service Support, Counselor Grant, uh, must add, I did forward a little bit of information in your office just on some fraud prevention stuff, if it does find its way into a flyer.
So we're done, but we'll put it on the website and. And we'll put it in the next newsletter, because it's always good information.
Yeah, sure, and I just wanted to forward, because Counselor had asked me to forward, so, you know, whether or not, you know, I didn't expect. And I didn't get something concise like I wanted, instead I got a whole presentation, but at the very end of the presentation, there was, uh, two slides that were like tips.
Yeah, really good information, Danielle's been great, I just wanna put that plug out there, she's put the newsletter together, we're just waiting for the photo of people who were at the park, have you shared with us? The one that appeared in the newspaper was really nice.
Yeah, I, I have this on my phone.
Okay, and we just need to, uh, stand up a photo of Counselor Morton so we can pop him in there.
There you go.
Yeah, so who wasn't there though, you're missing.
I know, sir. Yeah, so we said, we need a picture of you.
Picture of you. Picture of you.
Why?
You're gonna be here.
Who's small?
Oh, no.
And get involved with this program.
Danielle, it's just that she's all done, that newsletter, Dean, and so we'll.
Yeah, no. I just wanted to share. And then just, I mean, you all see that there's a chief, there's a chief's meeting or something, I just, I actually can't attend, uh, for conflict. But also, uh, just financially, I think it's a little bit lighter on everybody. If I don't attend, and then we'll get a report back from I think the chair's attending. Somebody's attending from the board, so.
Uh, Canadian Ecology Centre, uh, the park is reopening uh, its gates by, I think, forty-six days from now. And electricity is being restored within seven or eight days, I believe. I, I can look it up for you, but it's imminent. Um, but the ecology center, uh, will have road access, but it's gonna still take a while to make the entry into the park safe. There are still excavators and, uh, skitters, feller bunchers parked all over the place and there are still trees, so for now, it's a work in progress as to when people will actually be able to get back in and they're all anxious to get going.
Right, add something, I'm sorry, I don't wanna add more time. Uh, I was asked to continue to research the rationale for why we did have a landfill agreement with the Canadian Ecology Centre. And I did find something finally. I do have to say Trish found something actually, um, in the old, old, I don't know how she found it, but we've looked everywhere for this and suddenly this appeared when three C A Os ago, we're here and so this agreement actually is standing since long before three past C A Os and now we know the rationale, just that, um, impact did confirm that the portion of property owned by the province on which the Canadian Ecology Centre sits is excluded even from the pill, the payment in lieu of taxes, because it offers education as its major, um, residentite, so they're exempt from taxes. So that is why, then, so they paying, no, so the park does not pay taxes on the land that the Canadian Ecology Centre is, and that is the rationale for why they pay for landfill. So knowing that, I just would like you to tell me.
Thanks, I'm.
So now I need you to just, give me direction to come back with a twenty twenty-six agreement or not, where we re-enter into those agreements, because we, we said no for the balance of twenty twenty-five.
Right, and we did that as a temporary measure to assist them because they have no income. But, uh, uh, I agree, we, we should reinstitute that agreement.
I think so.
No, I think.
They're not taking any time. I'm hoping to getting a fire agreement as well.
Oh, absolutely.
So, um, so that council direct staff to reinstitute the fire agreement and the landfill agreement with the Canadian Ecology Centre effective January first.
Correct. Word, okay. The what? Okay. Was the resolution, the resolution only said the remainder of the year?
Yeah.
Okay, I just, you know, I just thought it was. Or open in the.
Yeah, it was just the remainder of the year.
It's the provincial announcement saying the park was, you know, open till twenty twenty-seven.
So I was at the meeting, um, and Dean and John can verify this. They said it'll be a phased in opening. And they said, they said that parts of the park may open this coming year, but the park won't be fully open twenty twenty-seven. The area in the very back section is absolutely ruined. And that's going to take more time to, but the, the campgrounds up front, close to the ecology center are not that bad. So they've gotta open up.
What they can.
What they can. So the whole park won't be open until twenty twenty-seven, but uh, I think you'll, you'll see part.
Yeah, I don't believe those comments came from a clear and concise plan. I think they were just a effort to answer the question, to have some communication, so.
Exactly.
They're likely flexible, slightly.
It's flexible.
Flexible, you know, I just wanna clarify since, you know, that was my take on the comments.
And so the Canadian Ecology Centre though, will it be open January one?
No, no.
So.
Yeah, what will be open is the road will be open, so people can drive in to the Canadian Ecology Centre. But, uh, are they starting programming? Bill Steer would like to start even Christmas programming. But it remains to be seen what they can actually do. So again, it's phased in.
So what do we wanna do with the agreements effective when then?
I think that, I, I thought that we said that once they were open.
Yes, like this is one, I don't think it should be January first, I just think that we should just wait and see and, but I think there's an interest to sue them at a future date.
Upon their opening?
Upon their, the answer was. Upon their opening.
That way we put this one to bed and I just, as your board, I personally just let me know when they're opening and we can.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, Castle Home Exit Strategy, uh, still, uh, I keep it really brief. Um, I have agreed to attend a town hall session uh, at, uh, the Castle Home Facility inviting Castle Arms residents on December the eleventh, I believe it is. Um, so the whole situation is still very fluid at this point in time and that's all I can say. Um, and that's it. Now, uh, anything else anybody wants to add to the agency A B Cs? No, uh, mover and a secondary to accept them as such, councillor Morton, councillor Manson. Um, now therefore be resolved that the council for the corporation municipality of Calvin accepts the agency sports committees reports and moments provided by council members at this meeting, all in favor? Go.
And to the Canadian Ecology Centre's landfill and fire agreements affected the date of their reopening.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, that, uh, councillor Latimer? In favor?
Yeah, yes.
All right.
We have closed meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I told you.
Yeah.
Now therefore be resolved that council for the corporation municipality of Calvin moving to closed session at nine twenty-nine P M.
Can I also add to that? And that council agrees to go beyond, because we have a four-hour mark. We have to have a motion to go forward, four hours will end while we're in close. If we don't do it now, we have to come out of close to say yes to the four hours. Come back into close, so if we can do that now.
Uh, the council, now therefore be resolved that council of the corporation municipality of Calvin moving to closed session at nine twenty-nine and agree to go beyond the four hour limit. Agree to go beyond the four hour limit. I'm mover and a secondary, councillor Morton, councillor Manson. All those in favor? Oh, sorry, and to discuss advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. All of them in favor?
Yes.
Thank you, carried.
For true.
We are in close session. And you don't have to stick around for four hours.
No.
As a Trish, you don't have to.